All right. Looks like we've begun the recording here. Welcome, everyone. This is the briefing portion of the Planning Commission meeting for September 6, 2022. I'm going to go ahead and do a brief roll call just to see who is here in terms of in terms of commissioners, Commissioner Askey, Commissioner Blackwell, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Burton Falk, present, Commissioner Dietrich, Commissioner Dick.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingo.
Present.
Thank you. I know that Chair Mandor will not be here, and I'm assuming Commissioner O'Neill is shortly on her way. So, welcome, everyone. This is the briefing session for the Planning Commission meeting. Briefing means that cases are heard as a preliminary public presentation for initial questions from the commission. Public testimony is not taken at this time. Just a reminder to our presenters, please be clearly describe which slide you are presenting, and that will assist those participating via audio. Today, on our agenda, we have four items, A through D. I will read them out, and then we will begin with Agenda Item A. Agenda Item A is the Golden Triangle zoning code text change. That'll be zoning review and approvals, text changes, Central Business District and Strip District neighborhoods. Agenda Item B is DCP-MPZC-2022-00702. That is Larmor Zone Change Petition. Zone Change Petition for three parcels from LNC, Local Neighborhood Commercial, to UI, Urban Industrial, in the Larmor neighborhood. Briefing Agenda Item C, that is DCP-ZDR-2022-08738 at 965 Liberty Avenue. That's exterior alterations and change of use to three-unit residential in the Central Business District. Agenda Item D, which is DCP-ZDR-2022-07423 at 2PPG Place. That'll be exterior alterations, Central Business District neighborhood. Going back to briefing Agenda Item A, Golden Triangle Zoning Code Text Change. Presenting that will be Mr. Lehman. Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, and thank you to all the commissioners. This is Proposed Zoning Text Amendment, zoning code text amendment. This comes to us. If we can advance this slide. This comes as it's sort of a response to or in concert with a city effort for a pilot program that was announced in July for working with the collaboratively with the URA, Allegheny County and the state to assist in converting some of the vacant commercial office space downtown into mixed-income developments, which would include affordable and workforce housing. And generally, there's a, you know, an interest in, you know, creating where the pandemic has resulted in a lot of vacancy in commercial office space downtown. That could be seen as an opportunity for residential conversion. And so this zoning code legislation is intended to streamline the review and approval of residential uses downtown. Next slide, please. Currently under the zoning code and really going back many, for many, many decades, the, any new residential dwellings in the Golden Triangle zoning district, which is the downtown area, requires planning commission approval and must meet a minimum lot size per residential unit, sort of a density measurement requirement. The zoning code amendments that we're proposing removes that planning commission review and removes the density measurement, the minimum lot size requirement. There's also currently a conditional use option for a transfer of development rights when the minimum lot size per unit is exceeded. Because we're removing the minimum lot size per unit requirement, then we're also removing that need for a transfer of development rights. It's no longer necessary. Next slide. We are proposing while we're into this section of the code, we're proposing some other modernizations. The, currently, we have a standard that requires any exterior renovations that have a cost greater than $50,000 to go to the planning commissions for review and approval. I was able to go back and dig through some old zoning codes that we have access to and could date that back to as early as 1983. I suspect that it's much earlier, although it wasn't the original text of the 1958 code. I believe that requirement dates back at least to the early 80s, if not into the 70s and 60s. You know, times have changed. $50,000 is a very different amount now, and what we have often filling up our planning commission agendas are applications for relatively benign facade renovations. And oftentimes, we have to work around applications for, you know, things like mechanical equipment and whatnot that end up costing more than $50,000. And so this update also increases that threshold to $250,000. There's also another piece of the Golden Triangle code that allows electronic message signs, which are a sort of another relic of the past code. These are the sort of ticker signs, the new sticker signs, and the one that everybody is most familiar with is on the corner of First and Grant. And while this wouldn't take away the ability for that sign to exist, it's a legal it's a legal use and has a certificate of occupancy and everything. This should have been removed when we updated the zoning code around electronic signs and made a policy decision that we didn't want electronic signs by right, or even at all in the Golden Triangle area. And so, in an effort to clean up the code and stay consistent with that effort from 2009, we were proposing to remove that section. And then, next slide, please. That may be all of the slides. I think so.
That is all the slides.
Okay. And so this is under Section 922.05. This is a text amendment. We staff is making a recommendation to see that the planning commission recommends this for approval to City Council. We believe that it meets the standards under 92205F. And I after hearing, I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, for your presentation. I just want to remind everyone that there is no public testimony or questions at this time except from the commission. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Mingo?
Hi. I said two questions for you. One was, have you reached out to neighborhood, the downtown planning groups and gotten their input? And then the other question was, could you just give me some examples of projects that would no longer come to the commission and maybe an example of a project that would still come to the commission on the residential side?
Okay, why don't I let Andrew answer, who looks poised to answer on the Development Activities Meeting?
Yeah, so as to the first question as to reaching out to both, you know, the we've reached out to the both Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership and to Councilman LaBelle, as this is, you know, that's the council district that covers, you know, the Golden Triangle zoning district. You know, they'll, we intend, you know, we intend through our conversations, you know, have them testify at the hearing, you know, as well as potentially property owners, and then relative to the scale of project, you know, question, Corey, I don't know if you want to respond to that.
Yeah. I don't, off of the top of my head, have an address of a specific, and perhaps my staff who are a little bit closer to the projects have one pop to mind that would have been between the $50,000 to $250,000.
Sure, I think we actually have three projects on the agenda today, two in briefing and one in hearing and action that may serve as examples. For instance, on briefing today, we have exterior alterations and a change of use to residential for three units that most likely would not meet the threshold. We also have exterior alterations in Market Square that I don't suspect would meet the 250,000, that meets 50,000 but not the 250,000. And then on hearing and action, we have the exterior alterations plus a demolition and new construction that would meet the $250,000 threshold and the demolition threshold, since we haven't changed demolition thresholds in the Golden Triangle.
And, you know, I would also say that, you know, the broader sense, the interest that has been discussed with the commission for a number of years is to begin to move some of the more some of the scale of development review out of the commission's out of the commission's hands to free up time to have more bandwidth for larger plans as we're embarking on a comprehensive plan for the city in the upcoming years and as we continue to tackle large-scale neighborhood plans like the one we just have been working on and
We definitely appreciate staff working on that and making sure that we can see more plans like that come through and fewer items like this. So much appreciated for all the work that you're doing as it relates to that. Commissioner Mingo, does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you. Thank you very much. And I also appreciate your work to try and make everything flow easier. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from commissioners? All right, if hearing none, I will move on to Agenda Item B under briefing, and that is That is Larmor Zone Change Petition. Zone Change Petition for three parcels from the LNC, Local Neighborhood Commercial, to UI, Urban Industrial, in the Larmor neighborhood. Presenting that for us today is Ms. Kramer. Ms. Kramer?
Good afternoon and welcome back, commissioners. Before I give my brief presentation, it looks like our guests are just coming over, so I will give my presentation and then do our sound check. This is a proposal to change three parcels, like you said, in the Larmor neighborhood from LNC, Local Neighborhood Commercial, to UI, Urban Industrial. The adjacent parcels to the west, to the southeast, and to the east are currently within the UI district, and the adjacent parcels that are to the northeast will remain in the LNC district. There are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment for this case, of course. The Development Activities Meeting was held on July 7 of 2022 with the Larmor Consensus Group. That's the registered community organization in this neighborhood. Now, the Planning Commission shall review this case in accordance with Section 922.05.F and those are the review criteria for the zoning map and zoning code text change amendments, and those are all listed in your report. So with that, I see that our guests have joined us, and let's do a sound check with Kevin McKeegan, and then he can lead us through his presentation.
Very good. Thank you, Ann.
And we can hear you. Thank you.
Very good. So commissioners, thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to brief you on this proposal this afternoon. And thank you, Ann, for the introduction. As Ann indicated, my name is Kevin McKeegan. I'm an attorney here in Pittsburgh with Meyer, Unkovic, and Scott. We represent TWG Development, which is the real applicant for this project. With me behind the Zoom screen, I suppose, at this point, from TWG is Chase Smith, who's the Vice President of Development there. TWG, for those on the commission who are not familiar with it, was founded in 2007. It currently has over 100 developments in 17 states. And here in Pittsburgh, it recently completed the Connection at Southside multi-family project over near the South Side Works. Also, in the Zoom are Jay Silverman and Don For of Dwell Design Studios. Dwell has worked on several projects here in Pittsburgh, including the second phase of the Arsenal Project in Lawrenceville and the 3500 Forbes Project, the 10-story apartment building now under construction in Oakland. I'm going to be making the presentation today, but Chase, Jay, and Don are all available to the extent that when I'm done, the commission has any questions. So if we can just stay on this introductory slide for a moment. The reason we're here is to brief the Planning Commission on a zone change application that I filed on behalf of TWG for the site that's outlined in red or colored in red on that slide. As you can see from this, the site is bounded by Hamilton Avenue to the south, Frankstown Avenue to the north, and it's separated from East Liberty Avenue to the west by a sliver of property that's owned by the URA. To orient everyone, the site is also roughly catty corner from the Kingsley Association Community Center. The site is currently vacant. It's all under one ownership. The current owner previously used it for the storage of equipment and materials for a heavy contractor operation, and TWG has reached an understanding to possibly purchase this property from the current proposed owner. So, Ann, if we could go to the next slide, please. The site in question is really an assemblage of 13 separate tax parcels. As I said, they're all under one common ownership. And if we go to the next slide, Ann. As you can see, the site is roughly cut in half by the boundary between the UI, Urban Industrial Zone, which is shown in brown, and the LNC Zone, which is shown in pink. We are focused for the moment on the easterly half of the site, which is zoned LNC. So the Zone Change Petition concerns the three parcels in that area. Those are lot and blocks 125A, 52, A 50, and A 45. We can go to the next slide, please, Ann. On this slide, we've given the commission a bird's eye view of the site as well as the neighborhood around it. As you can see from this photograph and the next ones that we'll go over shortly, most of the area around this site is either vacant properties or larger warehouse-type structures. In particular, across Hamilton Avenue, from the site is a very large warehouse building. It's five-plus stories in height, which is used for storage purposes. If we can go back, Ann, and I'm going to ask you to go back, if you don't mind, to the very first zoning slide. The next one, please. Go forward, one. Thank you. The reason I want to point this out is, as you can see, and this gives you, I think, a good sense of it. The LNC zone that we're talking about is really a projection or a peninsula into an area that is almost entirely urban industrial. You've got urban industrial going across East Liberty Boulevard through the post office site. The Kingsley site is an urban industrial. Properties across Frankstown Avenue are urban industrial, and most importantly, moving down Hamilton Avenue, everything is zoned urban industrial. There's nothing particularly distinguishing this property from those other urban industrial sites. So why are we proposing this zoning amendment? Aside from the substantial overlap in possible uses between the urban industrial and local neighborhood commercial districts, there are differences in site development standards, which TWG needs to overcome if it's going to move forward with the project I'm describing a few minutes. The LNC limits development to three stories, not to exceed 45 feet, and with a two-to-one maximum floor area ratio. In the urban industrial zone, by contrast, you're allowed by right to go up to 60 feet, not to exceed four stories, with the possibility of going to five stories with a special exception from the zoning board of adjustment. And your floor area ratio in the urban industrial increases from two-to-one to three-to-one. So there are significant site development differences between these two sites. So, Ann, if we can just move forward quickly, please. So if we can stop on this slide and the next slide again, just give you a better sense of the neighborhood in and around the project site. And, Ann, if we could go to the conceptual site plan. Thank you. So what we have up on the screen right now is a conceptual site plan for a project that TWG is investigating for the site. This would be a new five-story building with 200 apartment units. It would wrap a parking garage of sufficient size to accommodate those apartment units with some community and small retail space running along Frankstown Avenue. Now, I want to emphasize that we are still in early days regarding the conceptual site plans, so we don't have any architectural renderings that I'd like to give to you, but we wanted to sort of point you in a direction as to what TWG is considering for the property. As Ann indicated, we have engaged in a robust community engagement process for this. We've met with representatives of both East Liberty Groups as well as Larmor. We've conducted a Development Activities Meeting with the Larmor Consensus Group, and we've reached an understanding with the Larmor Consensus Group as to how this project, if it goes forward, could best fit into the Larmor neighborhood. That includes commitments by TWG to have at least 10% of the units in this project, if it's developed, to be affordable, with affordability really being measured by the city's inclusionary zoning ordinance, as well as providing support for MWBE contractors and hiring for employment opportunities if the project is built. And while I came in last week and it may not be part of your project, or your package, excuse me, we do have a letter of support from the Larmor Consensus Group with the Planning Department. So with this, we're happy to answer any questions on the zone change itself. We think the zone change makes a lot of sense, both for legitimate planning reasons and also because it allows TWG to move forward with this project on a really unified planning basis as opposed to trying to juggle the different site requirements between the LNC and UI zones. So thank you for your attention and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. At this time, commissioners, do we have any questions or comments as it relates to the Larmor Zone Change Petition? Okay, seeing none, we'll see you back.
Okay, thank you. And if I could, I will not be, actually, I will be out of the country on September 20th. So my colleague Frank Cozer here at Meyer, Unkovic, and Scott will be leading the presentation at that time. But I do appreciate the commission's attention today, and we look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. We appreciate the presentation and have a good trip.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we will move on to the next briefing agenda item, which is briefing item C, and that is DCP-ZDR-2022-08738 at 965 Liberty Avenue. Exterior alterations and change of use to three-unit residential in the Central Business District. Presenting that to us today will be Mr. Koenig.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can I do a sound check with our applicant?
Hey, can you hear me?
We can. Thanks, Matt. Again, good afternoon, commissioners. This is Project Development Plan Application, DCP-ZDR-2022-08738 for exterior alterations and change of use of floors 2, 3, and 4 for use as three-unit residential. This is an existing four-story structure. Exterior alterations include a new entry vestibule accessible from Liberty Avenue, a new stair tower, new recessed balconies for the residential units, and a new fourth-floor exterior roof deck facing Exchange Way. Interior alterations include a change of use for the upper floors of residential with one dwelling unit per floor for an overall of three dwelling units. The ground floor use is proposed to not change, and there's a current certificate of occupancy for restaurant use. There are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment. Staff design review is completed on July 25. Staff had no major comments, and CDAP was not recommended. A Development Activities Meeting was held virtually on August 11, 2022, with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. That damn report is included in your briefing report. And with that, I can turn it over to the applicant.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I have the dubious honor of being one of those projects you would no longer have to look at if those changes were implemented. So I will try to keep it fairly brief. This first page was, this is the presentation we had made to PDP, and this first page was just giving relevant statistics on the project, some of the history of the building. The one thing that is pertinent is the building was purchased by the current owners after having been condemned. There was damage from a fire. There were legal issues tying up the prior owner, which was the Images Bar that occupied only the first floor. So they've made a pretty serious effort to sort of turn this building around, and this is kind of the second step after a stabilization that they undertook a year and a half ago or so. If you could turn to the next. This is the site plan. It's one of those typical Liberty Avenue 22-foot-wide lots with zero open area. It fronts on Liberty Avenue in the front, obviously, and then Exchange Way in the back. On this plan, you can see the roof deck that's proposed. The existing building is, pardon me, is four stories, and the uppermost story is about two-thirds of the full depth of the building, creating sort of an outdoor area on the roof that's accessible from that fourth floor. The fourth floor also has a mezzanine, which is going to be part of that uppermost unit. And we had applied for and received a variance from the Board of Appeals for a single means of egress from the building, which was necessary to have a fourth floor served by just one stair. If you could move to the next page. These are just some views. There's a view prior to acquisition of the building, and then there's a view after the exterior facade renovations had taken place. The owners replaced the windows at that time, and as you'll see in the later images, those windows will actually come out, creating recessed balconies along the front with full glazing set back about six feet. If you could advance. I think probably two. This is just a view, again, of the front and then a view of the rear at the alley. Those dumpsters belong to the neighbor, but we will have one as well. These are the basement and first floor plans. Basement will be space for the future tenant. Ground floor will be almost entirely future tenant space, other than the new elevator vestibule, storage lockers, postal area. You can see the new stair in the upper left-hand corner. The tenant, as Kevin alluded to, currently, the CFO is for a restaurant. Obviously, that is something that would require major improvements were we to move forward with that. Currently, we're just keeping it sort of mothballed with the intention Currently, we're just keeping it sort of mothballed with the intention that we'd come back whenever a retail tenant is found, whether that's a restaurant or, or some other retail use. If you go ahead. These are the units on second and third floor, which are fairly typical one-bedroom units with an office space. You can see the six-foot terrace along the Liberty facade. If you go ahead to the next page. And then this is the fourth floor unit and then the mezzanine within that unit above it. You can see the roof deck, which is walled off from the existing mechanical roof area at the rear. Go ahead to the next. This is a front elevation. The ground floor storefront is sort of schematic for now. That will probably be undertaken. The, the goal, I think, is during the construction of the units that, to find a retail tenant and, and do that fit out under a separate permit at that time. You would advance one more. That's a street-level perspective view, looking at the new recessed decks and the glass railings that would be in that front plane. Those are the existing sill and head heights of the, of the existing window openings. Go ahead, one more. Not much different, one more. Hi, and this is sort of an axonometric view from the rear, showing the new egress door for the ground floor tenant. And then the egress door from the stair, as well as that walled-off roof deck on the, on the fourth floor unit. And I think that is about wrapping it up. If you go one more, I think there may not be one more. That's it, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the presentation. Commissioners, are there any questions? Or comments as it relates to the presentation here today? Given none, we thank you and will see you back in two.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, Commissioners and folks, we are going to move on to the last agenda item. Under our briefing portion of today, and that is agenda item D as in D C P dash Z D R. Dash twenty twenty-two dash zero seven four two three at two P P G place. Exterior alterations in the central business district and presenting that to us today is Mr. Koenig.
Hi, again, good afternoon, Commissioners. Let's do a sound check with our applicant.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and staff people.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. Okay, this is application for Project Development Plan, D C P Z D R twenty twenty-two oh seven four two three. For exterior operations associated with interior renovations for continued use as restaurant general. As I stated earlier, this is an existing five-story structure. Exterior alterations include facade, facade alterations along the portion of the existing ground floor restaurant. Use facing Market Square in the pedestrian passageway. A development activities meeting was held virtually on June ninth, twenty twenty-two with Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. That D A M report is attached. A portion of the project encroaches into the city right-of-way and was reviewed by Art Commission on August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. The Art Commission letter is also attached to your report. There's no change in size or location of the existing encroachment that faces Market Square. So therefore, the previously issued encroachment permit is still good, valid. There are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment. Staff design review is completed on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. And C D A review was completed on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The design review report is also included in your briefing report. And with that, I will turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Kevin. And again, good afternoon. What we'll be looking at is a facade renovation for the former Molinaros Restaurant. The operator is the Big Burrito Restaurant Group, who operates, you know, many fine restaurants in Pittsburgh. They're bringing their Alta Via brand that is in Fox Chapel to Market Square. And as Kevin just mentioned, those are all the meetings on the side. We got good feedback from each one of these meetings and I'll be mentioning those during the presentation. Next slide, please. I think you're all familiar with this location. It's on the passageway between Market Square and P P G Plaza. On the right-hand side as you're walking along the passageway. Next slide, please. One of the things that we concentrated on was understanding the public realm of Market Square. Noting that it was full of color, eclectic, diverse. And in all cases, approached the public realm differently, differently than the upper floors. And we tried to understand the scale and the diverse nature of Market Square. So these are just shots around the square that, again, I'm sure you're all familiar with. Next, please. A little bit of history for those who might not have been back here in nineteen eighty-four. If you look at the bottom right photo, that's what it used to be. It was reflective black mirrored glass with private activities going on inside, no relationship at all to Market Square. And if you look on the left, you can see how that continued to the P N C Bank, which is our tenant neighbor next door. So not a very strong connection. Next. So back in two thousand fourteen, what Kevin was describing was a very nice adjustment. And that is encroachment towards Market Square onto the sidewalk that put a dining porch out there. And also changed the use from private to, to a restaurant. Unfortunately, the restaurant failed and then Molinaros came and also failed. So that's the more current history. Next, please. In looking at this from an environmental standpoint, looking at it architecturally. It seems kind of cold. There's a lack of color. Not extremely inviting as opposed to some of the other outdoor eating areas that we'll look at in other slides. Next, please. So we then looked at architecturally, how to deal with the facade. Our, our restaurant wraps around, basically it faces Market Square, faces the passageway and then hooks around to P P G Plaza. The first thing we looked at was a signage band. We noticed that the mullions from the building facade above come through the signage band. So there's a proportion and a rhythm to that, but it is contiguous spandra glass. We also noticed that the City Works project actually used the signage band to add some color. And we'll see that they didn't necessarily respect the mullions continuing through from the rhythm above. Next. The second zone we looked at were these dark bronze aluminum additions. That really did not have a strong relationship to the building. And they kind of bumped out one at the entry and one at the eating porch. We noticed contextually across the passageway is the outdoor eating area of Promanti's. And we can understand that has a bit of color, has some fresh plants. The plants, the plantings at two P B G are all plastic. And we're excited about Big Berito bringing their green thumb. If you're familiar with Casbah and Eleven. You know how they artfully use fresh flowers and plants. So we look at those two, we call that zone two, the additions, and then the next one. Next slide, please. And then we looked at the base and they have these aluminum metal panel blocks, which is again now a third material that was brought in. So when we look at this with city planning, urban design targets, one of the things that came through very clear in their report. Was the concept of trying to, trying to have a cohesive and unified facade. Instead of one that changes every few feet. And that was sort of our driving passion here to try to unify this corner restaurant. Next, please. And this is just a diagram showing box one, box two, box three in the background. Basically just showing that it's not very unified or cohesive. Next, please. So then doing a little bit deeper dive into what's going on here at City Works. You see the bright orange diamond pattern, which does add a lot of vitality to Market Square. And you see that it covers up the existing mullions that reached down from the five-story building above. And you also see that outdoor dining area. Next, please. We then looked at Promanti's, which is one of the more popular outdoor dining venues on Market Square. We asked ourselves why. Part of it has to do with the proportions of the structure, the height of the planter boxes. The proportions of the lintel beams. And again, this would be our neighbor that, that faces us. Next, please. So this is a diagram. We'll show you the rendering afterwards, but wanted to go over some of the light touches that we wanted to do. Basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to join the entrance around the front facade facing Market Square. And catching on to the outdoor dining area. So it is a very light touch with some column covers and lintel. We're trying to use a color green, which is perhaps an environmental color. And in the signage band, we're going to bring the mullions through the signage band to sort of be the Connection between the building above and the restaurant below. We're going to be use a laser cut resin material in a diamond pattern. We have a close-up of that in another slide coming up. And we're going to have very minimal signage because we think this is going to be a very notable place. They had movable walls facing Market Square. We are going with awning-type windows that fold up. We think that's a little more contemporary. We have a planter in front and I'll talk about the planter in front. That was one of the comments of the Art Commission. And if you go to the next slide, please. That's what we're looking at. That's the, the concept. It was reviewed very enthusiastically by Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. That wrote a letter of recommendation at C D A. It was reviewed very enthusiastically. The changes that we picked up during the way primarily had to do with the Art Commission. And it has to do with the height of the planter that's facing Market Square. The height of the existing planter is at twenty-nine inches. And comes up just eight inches above the deck, the eating deck. We were raising that up to cover a little bit of the tables and they recommended That we lower it back down to twenty-nine inches and we're very open to that. So that's one of the things that we should discuss. The other thing that the Art Commission requested was that the color, even though this is a rendering, it's very hard to understand actual color from rendering. I think one of the Commissioners used the word punchy, that the color should be a little more punchy. Which probably can mean a little brighter and we're certainly open to that recommendation. Those were the two recommendations that came through our public processes. Next, please. So this is just showing a before and after, trying to show also how we're relating to the City Works signage band and the Promanti's Outdoor dining. We think this is a little warmer, softer, a little more inviting and certainly unified. And then just following up here are a series of elevation. Next, please. This is showing the front facade with the taller planter. And again, we are very much open to lowering it back to the original height, which is at twenty-nine inches. In the upper right-hand corner is the laser cut resin that we're going to be using along with the interior designer. This is a restaurant they did in Scottsdale, Arizona. The materials A Z X, which is a paintable material that can be refreshed. And it's a durable outdoor weathering material. Next, please. That is the facade along the passageway and showing how we're covering up the dark bronze columns and beams. Next, please. And then facing P P G, we're really not doing anything where it says no exterior changes facing P P G Plaza. We're basically just covering the outdoor patio. Next, please. And that's our presentation at this point. So we're very open to listening to your comments, Commissioners.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the presentation. At this time, Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments as it relates to this presentation? Commissioner Mingo.
Hi, thank you, Commissioner Burton-Falk. And so my question first is to perhaps Mr. Lehman, which is that so this project would not be Brought to the Planning Commission for, with those changes, the golden triangle review. Would it still go to the Art Commission? Can you explain that relationship?
Sure. So whether or not it would go to the Art Commission isn't, doesn't really have anything with the legislation that we're proposing To change in the golden triangle. That's, that's the, the Art Commission requirement is triggered Not by financial cost or anything else. It's because it's in public right-of-way or There's work within, on, on public property. So that's the Art Commission trigger. I'm not sure, Kevin, is this one that you said that has, that's below the threshold?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, you know, we, it's above fifty thousand dollars, but we would Go back to the applicant and ask for submission of a cost estimate of exterior of the, you know, The total cost of the demolition, exterior alterations to see where that would meet the two fifty threshold. Dan, I don't know if you have any big picture kind of estimate at the current of what this would be.
Oh, we actually do have an estimate. We've hired a construction manager. At this point, we're here because it's over fifty. I think what you're saying according to your first item, if the legislation was changed to over two fifty. I, I can't tell you what the number is right now. I know we put it on the application, but it's probably hovering around there.
So this might be sort of near the cutoff line in terms of, of scope. Where, where a project of this scope and scale might be before the Planning Commission. And this would be at the sort of lower scale of the types of projects that the Commission would see.
It's usually over fifty thousand dollars, I can say that.
Commissioner Mingo, does that answer your question?
It does. So this project also that went to the Design Review Commission, and not the right commission, but the Design Review Committee. Prior to coming Just to To the briefing.
This went to C D A, yes.
This one went to C D A first as well. You know, it's a funny sort of process that we would have a project that goes to the Art Commission. You know what I mean? But not projects that go to Projects that go to the Art Commission to review sort of public realm issues. Fair enough, but then, you know, what is the role of the Planning Commission? In terms of how it reviews the, the public realm as well. And it's an awkward thing for us to be sort of competing with the, with the Art Commission and their comments. And, and for us to have comments In the same sort of arena. So, um, thank you for explaining the magnitude of scale issue. I, I do think that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is, is more reasonable. And I'd hate for everybody to have to wait another twenty years in order for us to redo two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Are there examples in other cities? I know we're jumping back to the prior agenda, but it, it's interesting to relate it. Are there examples from other cities that ties better than a hard number, other ways of sort of making A, a boundary for what, what triggers the public commission's review?
I don't have that at my fingertips right now. We can, we can take a look. I mean, I think my experience in looking at other cities zoning codes and processes Is that there's a lot of variation. A lot of times, things are based on, as we did with the RIV. our, our planning mission triggers based on a floor area scope of new construction and other, other triggers. So I suspect that other cities have, also have, you know, a lot of, if somebody went to look at our code to try to find just one number or just one threshold, they'd be overwhelmed and confused. So that's my, my general experience looking at other cities is that it, it, you know, it varies. I will say also that my general experience looking at other cities' processes related to planning commissions is that our city tends to be more on, a little more unusual or, or more on the spectrum of having a lot of development review assigned to the commission, whereas in, in a lot of larger cities, the planning commission's more predominantly focused on, on plans and policies.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lehman. That's, that's helpful.
Hey, great. Are there, and, oh, Commissioner Mingo, did you have another question? I'm sorry. It looked like I, no? Okay. Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments at this time? If there are none, that will conclude the briefing portion of today's agenda. I would like to ask that we come back at 2:05 for the remaining agenda hearing in action and so on. So until then, 2:05, we'll see you all soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day, and we'll see you back in two weeks.
Hey, we're gonna start to move back into session here. Commissioners, can I have you turn on your cameras or acknowledge that you are here, please, and thank you? As the court reporter here and ready?
Commissioner Burton Falk, I tried to remote the court reporters, so we're just waiting on them to accept. Oh, there they are.
Oh, there we go.
Hello, Ms. Falk, Ms. Burton Falk, this is Dylan Duran, the court reporter, I'm ready to begin.
Well, hello there, Dylan, welcome and thank you so very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, well, given we've got a reporter, I am going to welcome us back. This is the hearing and action portion of the planning commission meeting for today, September 6th, 2022. The hearing means that the cases are presented for action by the planning commission. During the hearing portion of the planning commission meeting, we'll take public testimony. Instructions will be given after each item. And we'll be able to do a reminder for the presenters to speak clearly as they describe each slide. What I'm going to do much prior to that here first is go through roll call. And I'm going to go down in alphabetical order, Commissioner Askey. Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dietrich. Commissioner Dick.
Present.
Commissioner Mingo.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick, thank you, Commissioner Mingo. Chair Mondor will not be here, and Commissioner O'Neill.
Present.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. I am going to read off our agenda for today. Agenda item A will be the approval of minutes, agenda item B will be correspondence. Something to add after correspondence, agenda item C is hearing and action. Agenda item D is plan of lots, agenda item F is the director's report. Okay, so, under minutes for today, we have about, let's see, two, four, five sets of minutes to approve. We can take them separately because I don't believe that all were in it for each, so we'll go through them independently. We're going to do an approval of minutes from May 31st, if all commissioners have had. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I think for the May 31st and June 14th, staff is still working through some of the corrections.
Okay, very good, well then, thank you, that makes things a little easier for me. Now we only have to do three, and I'll take those separately if that is okay. We're going to do an approval with everyone that has had an opportunity to send in any edits or corrections. Do I have a motion for approval on June 28th, minutes for approval?
No move.
Second.
Chair. Commissioner Dick moved, Mingo second. I'll go through roll call, Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Abstain.
Okay, those pass, July 2nd, all edits have been made, if so, do I have a motion from the floor for approval?
So moved, Blackwell.
Blackwell moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dick? All right, I'll go through roll call, Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Abstain.
And Commissioner O'Neill? Very good. Now we'll go through July 26th. All edits, do I have a motion from the floor for approval?
So moved.
All right, Commissioner Dick, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk, I'll need to abstain. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Abstain.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Abstain.
Okay, very good, we are going to move on to correspondence for today. My apologies, I'm going to need to pull this up again. Under correspondence for September 6th, 2022, we have correspondence under item DCP-MPZC-2021-01727. And that would be for the Carnegie Mellon University Institutional Master Plan. That would be from the Shadyside Action Coalition. That would also be from C. Leon Sherman, and as well Alan Ackerman. Correspondence under item DCP-MPZC-2021, that would be Fifth Avenue, we have correspondence. This is from Uptown Partners. We have correspondence from Larmor Consensus Group under DCP-MPZC-2022-00702. For the Larmor Zone Change Petition, that correspondence is from the Larmor Consensus Group. And my apologies, I think I did skip one, which would be item DCP-ZDR-2020-04322 at 24 South 18th Street, that would be for the South Side Flats. And this is not for something for today, but that correspondence is coming from the South Shore Place HOA. Okay. After correspondence, I do have an acknowledgement. Commissioner Mingo is stepping down as secretary, staying on as a commissioner. We'd like to thank her for holding that position for several years. And today, I would like to propose a motion forward for Commissioner Dick as secretary. Do I have a motion from the floor for Commissioner Dick as secretary?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingo. Do I have a frickin', Commissioner O'Neill, thank you very much, so Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick? Yes, Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
If any commissioners would like to join me in that, thank you for Commissioner Mingo, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Welcome as secretary, Commissioner Dick. Okay, we are moving on to agenda item C, that is hearing and action. I am going to read through each item first, and then we will go through them as typical. Agenda item number one, that is DCP-ZDR-2021-14139 at 350 Forbes Avenue. That is an amendment to the PDP for Point Park Playhouse Urban Open Space in the Central Business District. Agenda item two, under hearing and action, is DCP-ZDR-2022-05156 at 429 through 433 Wood Street. That's a demolition, new construction, and exterior alterations in the Central Business District. Item number three, under hearing and action, is DCP-MPZC-2021-01727 Carnegie Mellon University Institutional Master Plan and Zone Change. Squirrel Hill North, North Oakland, Shadyside Neighborhoods. Moving back up to agenda item number one at DCP-ZDR-2021-14139 at 350 Forbes Avenue, presenting that for us here today is Mr. Lehman, Mr. Lehman, take it away. Thank you.
And as Mr. Lehman, I'm going to couragefully pass it on to Ms. Rakers to present this move for me.
Thank you, sorry. If I can just do a quick sound check with my applicants here, although I don't see them yet, so I will go ahead and do a quick introduction. And then we will do the sound check with them. All right, so this is a little bit of a different type of application. This is an amendment to Project Development Plan 15-004 for Point Park University. So this was for their Point Park Playhouse project, which was approved back in 2015, and that's how we used to number the applications back then. So the playhouse was originally approved with the required urban open space at ground level and on the second floor. And one of the planning commission conditions was that the signage be installed indicating that the urban open space is open to the public. The property owner was cited in September of 2021 as they had installed signage stating that the urban open space was closed to the public. That signage has now been removed, and the applicant is seeking to add fencing and gates to be closed overnight, but also to install the required signage saying that it is the urban open space is open to the public. As the proposed fencing and gates are a significant change to the urban open space, the zoning administrator has determined that this is not approvable as a minor amendment to the project development plan, and thus it must return to planning commission for the change to the project development plan approval. A development activities meeting was not required as this is an amendment to the application, which was in existence prior to the registered community organizations. However, the applicant did go to the downtown PDP for a development activities meeting on August 11th, and you, planning commission had that memo in their packet. The proposed fencing and gates were reviewed at staff design review in January of 2022. Staff had concerns about the height of the proposed fence and the gates, and felt that they created an inhospitable space for pedestrians, and thus would discourage the use of the urban open space. Staff recommended that the applicant look at lower fence and gate height or other design options that better align with the existing building. However, the applicant had chose to proceed to planning commission with the current design with the two different height options. One is the height that we saw at staff design review, which was six and a half feet, and they also presented when they came for briefing at five and a half feet. Staff still has concerns with both fence designs without any other design changes, that the proposed fencing and gates remain inhospitable for pedestrians. We do believe that other design options likely exist that would improve overnight security of this urban open space without the harshness of these current fencing proposals. So there are a couple of relevant project development plan criteria, and you have the full product development plan criteria in your report, and you also have the applicant's submission of their statement of compliance with the project development plan. But some of the relevant criteria are that the proposed development must adequately address protections of views and view corridors. And this is applicable here, as its proposed fencing and gates for the urban open space are along Forbes Avenue downtown and a significant street and view corridor to Market Square. There's also the criteria, and I won't read the whole thing, relevant to functionality of urban open space. And staff feels that the addition of fencing and gates will likely discourage the use of open space there by lessening, directly lessening its function. So staff is recommending that the planning commission, sorry, that the planning commission of City of Pittsburgh denies without prejudice the project development application for Point Park University. We would be happy to continue to work with the applicant on this application. So with that, let me do my quick sound check. So Sean, if you just want to unmute yourself, make sure we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep. Great, and we will turn it over to you to the presentation.
Thanks, and I also have Chris Hop with me, I think he is going to be presenting. Mo's going through our presentation, we also have Chris Hill, I believe, who's vice president of operations at Point Park University. Good afternoon, commissioners, thanks for having us. As we addressed at the briefing, this is we're amending, we're seeking to amend the prior project development plan that was approved for the playhouse open space requirement, which is the plaza. As we addressed, it has become a problem for the university to police after normal business hours. As such, we, I mean, it's necessary for the university to add a fence and gate to close it off after hours. The plaza was approved, it was approved under the zoning code's urban open space regulations, which specifically allow for a fence so long as it's open during normal business hours. Here, under either option of fencing that we've proposed, it will be open for normal business hours, and matter, as a matter of fact, it will be open from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM every day, and we have signage that we proposed to install. So since this is something that is permitted under the zoning code, we respectfully request that you approve our application. And I will let Mr. Hop go through the presentation right now. Chris, you there?
Is someone else advancing the slide? Okay. Go to the next page, please. All right, this is the proposed plan, so the existing open urban space is something courtyard, has a scissor accessible ramp integrated into a staircase that also serves as seating area to that space. Currently, and Forbes Avenue is to the north of the sidewalk. Currently, there are two openings to the far left and far right of the space. And there is, there is a single pipe rail along the sidewalk at the edge of the arcade, if you will, that frames the urban space as well as low wooden seating walls. So you cannot walk directly from the sidewalk into the space, you still go into the far left or right entrance points, although. So this plan shows the proposal where there would be a fence between the piers and two operable gates that will be open during the hours that were mentioned. And on the right is a detail of the fence, and we have other drawings that show the fence, but the fence is, matches existing railings and fencing that are part of the architecture of this piece of the building, of the playhouse. Go to the next slide, please. So this shows it a little more, in a little more detail, so on the left-hand side is one entrance gate, and on the right is the other. They're currently, again, open right now, unobstructed, but the proposal was during off-hours, which is listed on the signage, they would be closed. Next slide. So this is the existing condition, and again, you can see that what I mentioned, a single line railing along the sidewalk and the wooden bench, and then the two on the left and far right openings to the space below. Next. So as it stands right now, you know, you can only enter the space where, in the areas in the dashed rectangles and in between is, unless you jump the rail, is not an entrance to the space. Next. So the proposal is to, and this is a rendering showing the gates open on the far left and the far right, and the fencing, which again matches the railing that's above on the arcade. And the thought here was, you know, we didn't want to fill it in all the way, it need, the fencing needed to be high enough. I mean, if it's too low, it serves no purpose, frankly. But to frame these as if they were windows, which is why we took the bar stock or the tube stock following the R's, so that it looks like a window frame, and tried to set the height of the top of the gate and the fence in proportion, so that it had more like a two to, one-third to two-thirds ratio, and it lines up with one of the mortar joints in the stone. And go to the next one, please. And this is the first, this is the higher option, we do have the lower option, as Kate mentioned. So these are the existing steel, these are painted steel, tube stock, bar stock, whatever you want to call it, on the upper terrace on this arcade. And the intent would be to match that detailing. Next. And these are the specifications for that railing, and we would, we would match it, so it's, it is steel, it's painted appropriately with appropriate high-performance paint system, you can keep going through this. So these, these are the specs that were used on the existing railing, would match that. Next. Again, this is the higher option, so this shows what it looks like when the gates are closed, this is after hours. The existing bike racks would remain, there's a tree that we've taken out, it will remain. And then you can see that signage is shown, the new signage is shown, the far right, that large sign, that's like the playbill, that's already, that's an existing sign. And there's another existing plaque as well, but, so we will be adding new signage indicating the hours of operation of the park. Next. Just a different perspective. Next. And this is a straight-on elevation, at the far left, it's about five and a half feet, at the far right, about six and a half, almost six and a half feet, because the sidewalk is sloping, and again, we'll have the three new signs. So again, the intent was to make these like a window frame and to relate to the railing above. Next. And this is what it looks like when it's open during daytime hours. One thing I want to point is on the far left, because of the way the stairs work, the gate on the left folds out, opens outward and folds back on to itself, whereas the one on the right, there's a landing, and we're able to swing that gate in. Okay, next. That's another, just another view of the gates open. Next. And a straight-on elevation with the gates open. Okay, I think the next one is the second option where we lowered the height. So this drops about a foot. I'm not personally crazy about the proportions, but it definitely is more open, so we, we wanted to show this in response to comments received at the last review. You know, it's a deterrent, I suppose someone could still hop this fence, but I guess they could hop any fence, really, but it's a deterrent, but it's not as, as high as the previous scheme, it's a foot lower. So other than that, everything remains the same, so we don't have to dwell on this, but if you want to just cycle through this, these options, we have the same views for the lower fence. This is closed, in the closed position. And these are the gates in their open position. Now, the next slide, this is the proposed signage that will be in three locations on each of the piers, so that people know the hours of operation. And I think that's the last slide.
Okay, if that concludes your presentation.
Now, hold on one second, I, so I believe Chris Hill is also on line two.
My apologies.
I don't know, I think you have to hit the raise your hand button, so I'm not sure if he did that, but that's how I got in, because I didn't know that. I'm back.
While, while we wait for him, I am.
Very, very.
Sean. Hey, hi, Chris. Chris, could you just explain for the record, some of the issues, problems that the university has had? Um, some of the issues, problems that the university has had. Um, policing this open space area over the past uh three or four years?
Yeah, since uh twenty nineteen, we've had two hundred and seventeen. Um, issues where our public safety department had to go down either for loitering, public drunkenness. Um. There were several other uh. Issues and most of this happened um after hours. Um, and in some cases, it, it was um. Happening, well, you know, while we have students at our playhouse overnight, because we do, you know, they are working over there during presentations. Um, we just had difficulty because of, again, of uh Forbes, we have, we increased lighting. Um, at our entrances, recruit, decreased the lighting at that area. Um, had more patrols, uh, but again, it's, it's, we're just having it with that overnight period.
Okay, and um, have you, has the university tried anything else other than fencing to uh address these after-hour issues?
Again, the lighting and we've increased the foot patrol and also um. The uh uh. Public, public safety's um done some bike patrols and some uh more issues or more areas with the cars.
And that, they've all proven ineffective, so.
Again, two hundred and seventeen, just this, just this year to date, we've had sixty-seven.
Okay, and this fencing, just to be clear, is going to match the existing fencing that's already installed, correct?
Correct, that was our goal to make it.
Okay.
As seamless as possible.
And the existing railing and the bench in the back, it hasn't served as a deterrent, so. Um, being able to install gates is the only way to um. Police uh access to this area after hours, correct?
Well, for the evening, yeah, since we put the additional um seating there, which was again for the. Public to come in, have seating, it was undercover, we're just finding at night that it's, it's um. It, it's a challenge for us, because again, as it provides cover and seating during the day, it provides. Um, opportunities for people also over hours or after hours.
Thank you, um, and then I would also, uh, just for the record, like to ask um, uh, Kate. Uh, what exactly uh is the univers-, or um. Department of Planning's uh concerns with this fence and. Like you have, you've proposed something that's not really objective. That um, I'm not sure how we would uh, the university would be able to comply with. There are no objective standards, I guess is what I'm going to.
Yeah, there's a couple of related standards in the project development criteria. Um, the first one that I had mentioned was the proposed development must adequately address protection of views and view corridors. Including if applicable, important views along major public streets. Uh, views from surrounding private properties and views to and from significant public places such as parks, open space or riverfronts. Uh, so this is on an important view corridor, uh, again, along Forbes Avenue, which is a major street downtown. Uh, and it's also a view corridor into Market Square, and again, the concern is just sort of the fence is just sort of appears um inhospitable to um. For pedestrians. The other criteria is the proposed development must adequately address, address the location. Development and functions of open space, including but not limited to. Provision, provision of additional open space where necessary for light and air to the adjacent properties. Provision for additional open space where desirable to lessen pedestrian impacts and increase safety. Or maintenance of existing open spaces which serve these same purposes. I mean, really, it's about the functionality, but I read the whole.
I know, I, I apologize for that, um. I, I, is it your, is it the department's recommendation that no fencing or gate should be installed?
I don't know, I don't know if that the question is quite as black and white as that is, there may be, there may be a solution that we feel like, or the commission feels like, because it's really, you know, it's their decision here, it's not, it's not staff's decision. Um, I think staff feels like, and the current design, it is inhospitable to, for pedestrians, which is also to say that um. If there may be a scenario, we could continue to work on, that might have fencing and it might have gates. Uh, but it would be sort of lower intensity, less fencing, um, that would, that would, you know, might be more hospitable to pedestrians.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I, and I'll, I'll chime in too, um. As a representative of the, of the department, you know, this is. This is, the concerns that we have are about, you know, you, you, you have a significant design challenge where. Uh, that, you know, the sort of ultimate goal of a public open space is to be welcoming and inviting into that space. Um, the, the initial design is already challenged in that it's sunken and then sort of not quite as easy if it were. Out on a corner of the property or something like that, that, you know, it's not, it's not a typical public open space, so it's already sort of. At a disadvantage in terms of being welcoming and, and to draw, to. You know, to sort of convey to the public that this is your space, um, as per the, for the code. Uh, and, and so while we're not in the business of dictating what a design. Uh, solution is to a challenge like that. Um, you know, it, it is our, we feel that it's our responsibility to uh respond if we feel that the design. Doesn't, you know, it, it is sort of counter to the, the fundamental goals, or is in some way detrimental to the goal of. Uh, of welcoming folks into the, into the open space, so. I mean, if, if, if there was, you know, without being a designer and without taking into consideration all of the. Constraints and challenges that would come along with making that, you know, to developing a design, if there was something that. Uh, that was more open when it's open. Uh, and, you know, that would uh establish the needed security when it's closed. Um, I think that would be, uh, you know, what staff would be more, I don't, I don't think staff is saying you can't secure this space. Um, I think we understand the public safety uh and sort of property maintenance and management concerns. Uh, I think it's more, uh, you know. Uh, you know, what has been presented to date i- is not. Uh, you know, it, it, we feel like it's still passe. Um, does not achieve the, you know, the sort of dual. Needs and goals that, as we see it.
Okay, I understood, if we could go back to the presentation, um, I believe the first existing conditions photo. It's like a, like a fourth slide, maybe. Right, oh, sorry. One more. So you can see it's already, I mean, from the railing to the railing. I mean, it, you can't, there's no access directly down, so. The only two places that there are existing openings are, you know, seen in white, and those, there's going to be two gates. All day that are going to swing all the way open, I believe one goes three hundred and sixty and the other goes as far as it can, so it's going to be as open as it is right now. And we're also going to be installing three signs that say this is open to the public. From eight AM to nine PM every day, which there's no signs there right now, so I don't know how, like, what other. Alternatives that we could propose. Other than what is before uh the commission and what we have right now, so.
Yeah, I can, I can respond if you'd like.
Sean, yeah, understood, yeah, please.
I mean, I, you know, I mean, first of all, I don't, I don't believe we have. Uh, I, I'm not sure about the genesis of the wooden benches and fences that are there. I'm not sure there was a process around whether, whether or not those would be. Um, you know, I believe the original design had it all open and those were added later. Um, and then um, the signage was a requirement from the jump, so there, there should be signage there. Um, and we're, we're just a little bit tardy on getting that, you know, I think it's great that that's going to go in, but. Uh, I don't think the signage alone um resolves the problem, and then finally, I mean, I, you know. I think, I think you can agree, I would hope, I think objectively, that um adding. Uh, substantial amount of fencing changes the character of the space. Um, from, from something that's open to something that's closed up, and then I think that's what staff is responding to.
Understood and appreciated.
Now, uh, Mr. Gallagher is, would that conclude the presentation for you at this time?
Uh, it does.
Okay, I, I didn't want to uh stop you if you needed to continue. I also wanted to make note and apologize because I, I do think that I. Forgot to share that these items that are under hearing and action, first we'll hear the presentation, then we'll take public testimony. And then commission will then deliberate and take action, so if there is anyone present that would. Uh, like to give public testimony, then we ask that you please raise your hand for the raise hand function. And uh, if someone is here by phone, then press star nine. Do we have anyone with a hand raised that would like to give any testimony? Uh, it does look like there is someone.
Yes, we do, Commissioner. Jason Hobbs, you have three minutes, I'm going to allow you to speak now.
Thank you, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, um, I'm happy to be here this afternoon, nice to um hear and see you all. I just wanted to speak really briefly, I'm here for another matter, but as somebody who's worked downtown for a long time, works in economic development, um. And uh, is very concerned about many of the issues downtown and that the downtown region has faced since the pandemic. I, you know, I sympathize with Point Park's request, and I, I guess I'd like to see a little more consideration given. To the public safety elements, as somebody who, I have little kids, I haven't had my little, my, my kids come meet me for lunch in the last three years downtown, and I'm reluctant to. It's often unsafe, and I, I appreciate that Point Park is trying to make the. Their environment both safe and welcoming at once, and I, I understand the city's concerns as well, but. I'd like to see a little bit of credence given to the public safety concerns, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate your testimony. Is there anyone else that has a hand raised that would like to give testimony?
I do not see any other hands raised at this time.
Thank you so very much, so given we don't have any other hands raised, commissioners. Uh. Are there questions, comments? Concerns that we would like to address? Commissioner Mingo?
Um, yes, so I. I am, have spent some time near this space. And do sort of understand the view corridor and the containment of the space, and I do have some sympathy for. Point Park um in the security realm of especially what is currently happening downtown. And sort of current environment downtown, things will change, things do change and change again. I do think that you need to take a very careful look at your own drawings and see that the black fence. Really looks like a huge black fence, like you're trying to keep. Contain something in or contain something out, and perception matters so much. If you want Point Park to be a welcoming place where students want to come. You're actually putting up a billboard by putting up this fence. And maybe should consult with your marketing department that says, uh, we are contained, this is not a da-, this is a dangerous place. Um, and I don't think that that's the message that you want to send as the university about the location that you're in, so I would encourage you to consider that. Um, as a signpost for safety for your own university. And, and I encourage you to maybe seek some help from some architects. And also to look carefully at how George Washington University. And or New York City University has dealt with similar situations, and there have been some brilliant solutions to both help. With public safety by design, through design elements, and also um. Make it feel like the intention of the open space. Plan for downtown is, which is to have an, an open and inviting place for people to occupy. A public space during the daytime hours, and so there. This can be solved by design, and I'm, I, I wish that you had spent more time, Point Park, thinking through. Design and maybe getting some opinions from even people internally. In your um organization that have some more design expertise, and I would encourage you to reconsider. Putting up a huge fence as a billboard um for your university, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mingo uh for that, but commissioners, do I have any one else that might want to make comment? Commissioner O'Neil?
Commissioner Dick speaking, I'll let her go first, if that's okay. You're on, Commissioner Dick. You're still on mute? You want me to just go ahead for now?
Okay.
Yeah.
I think I've got it now.
Holly, okay, go ahead.
I think, I just, this bring, the difficulty in policing this property at night is, I, I understand with, with great sympathy. Um, I think it just, it brings to mind to me that another major problem for downtown, I think it's one, is the need for. Public restrooms in various places in downtown Pittsburgh, I think is part of the problem. I'm not proposing that Point Park solve this, by any means, but I know the tremendous liability. And uh expense of maintaining such places, but I do think it's something that the, the city should think about in, in the future, because this just brings it to uh our view, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Dick, Commissioner O'Neil?
Uh, I, I appreciate the design and the thoughts that went into this, I know there's, you know, discussion of echoing what is already there. But it seems like, based on the commission's comments, that that is, is not welcoming, um, it kind of. Honestly gives like a cage-like appearance. And so I'm not necessarily opposed to a fence or something going there, but I do think the design. Could be a little more thoughtful, the way Commissioner Mingo was discussing, um, for example. Uh, you know, I haven't looked at the, the places she talked about, but EQT Plaza. You know, that. Gate fence fully retracts during the day, um, you know, if there are some other options that. You know, the, the black is really kind of tough, um. You know, if there was something more transparent, uh, you know, it is a playhouse, if there was something that. You know, was related to what was going on in there, um, some art, uh, I. I, I, I sympathize fully with the. With the public safety aspect, and I, I don't disagree that something should fill those spots in or somehow be adjusted, but. The black fence is really giving us a lot of pause.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil.
I was just gonna, this is Commissioner Blackwell, I was just gonna agree with. Commissioner O'Neil and everyone else, and maybe suggest doing something that's green. Because it's um. Not just beautiful, but it, it's good for. The air and it's not offensive. Um, and it's, it's not as expensive and PNC, um, the buildings at Wood Street. I said, they have a lot of green going on, the buildings downtown, so it would match. And people would see it more as decoration or an upgrade instead of keeping them out. Um, uh, the gates, like everyone was saying, is just um. Very loud statement. That, that's, that's all I had.
So you're talking about natural plant fencing, aren't you?
Yes.
Okay.
And it goes along with the storm water, it could just, um. The old-fashioned cliche, kill two birds with one stone. But be welcoming and friendly while also protecting your property.
Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell. I um would like to echo my fellow commissioners in saying that I, I feel the same way, uh, based on their concerns. I feel that there is work to be done, I, I wish prior to today. Maybe you would have had a chance to sit down with staff and, and sort of work through things a little bit differently. Um. But, but it can be done and we can get there, I, I just think that there's going to need to be a little bit more uh work put into it. Um, commissioners, are there any? Um, commissioners, are there any additional comments or uh, might we be ready to make a motion based on the recommended motion for today?
I'm sorry, can you reread the recommended motion?
Absolutely. The recommended motion for today is that the Planning Commission of the City of Pittsburgh denies without prejudice the project development plan application DCP dash ZDR dash twenty twenty-one dash one four one three nine uh, filed by Buchanan and Ingersoll and Rooney on behalf of Point Park University.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion? Is that a hand, Commissioner Dick? Was that? Motion?
I I'm I'm moving that we, I put forth a motion that was just read.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Do we have a second?
Before we have a second, um, is the applicant interested in tabling for two weeks to come back? Before we deny, if we deny?
Yeah, um, yeah, that would, that would be fine. I not to put uh, the client on the spot, but yes, we, I think two weeks would be reasonable. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil.
Okay, I withdraw my motion then.
Okay, so then do we have, thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Do we have a motion on the floor for uh, them to come back in two weeks?
I moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Uh, so Commissioner Blackwell.
I.
Commissioner Burton Falk, I. Commissioner Dick?
I.
Commissioner Mingo?
I.
And Commissioner O'Neil?
I.
Okay, so then we'll see you back in two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Have a good day.
You too.
All right, so now we are going to move on to agenda item number two under hearing in action. Agenda item number two is DCP dash ZDR dash twenty twenty-two dash zero five one five six at four twenty-nine through four thirty-three Wood Street. That's a demolition of a new construction and exterior alterations in this uh, central business district neighborhood. Presenting that for us today is Mr. Kunnack.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, DJ, if we can have a sound check and if there's other um, members of the applicant team that would like to be submitted, please raise your hand.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can you hear us okay?
We can, thank you. I'll hold for a moment while additional members are submitted or admitted, promoted. Okay. Right, good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, my name's Kevin Kunnack with the Department of City Planning. This is a project development plan application, DCP ZDR um, oh five one five six um, for demolition, new construction and exterior alterations. This project includes demolition of the existing three-story structure located at four thirty-three Wood Street. Parcel one dash H dash two three seven and new construction of a five-story structure. Exterior alterations are proposed for two abutting existing structures. Two forty-one Forbes Avenue, known as the Skinny Building, and four twenty-nine to four thirty-one Wood Street, known as the Roberts Building. A public-facing interior art installation um, program is proposed for the Skinny Building and is before the commission as exterior alterations. Applicant is posing to consolidate parcels and interior renovations to interconnect all three structures. Uh, no uses are proposed as part of this application. Uh, there are no requests to the zoning board of adjustment. Staff design was held on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and again on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Um, seat app review was not recommended. That is, the design review memo is attached. The second staff design review um, reviewed the proposed um, art installation project. A development activities, activities meeting was held virtually on April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two with the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership. Um, and with that, I will turn it over to our um, applicants.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kunnack.
I'm sorry, so low out of practice, but um, before I begin, before you go on DJ, um, so it is uh, recommended, the recommended motion is that the planning commission approves this project development plan um, with the following conditions. Uh, DOMI shall review the final plans and issue the necessary DOMI approvals prior to issuing the record of zoning approval. And that final construction document shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. And with that, I will turn it over to our applicants.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, good afternoon, planning commission and commissioners. Uh, my name is DJ Bryant. I am with the architecture firm AE seven. I am joined here today with Teresa Luca, who is in the room with me, um, as well as Ryan England. Um, two client representatives, Alyssa and Jeff, and I believe our civil engineers on the Caldwell mark. Um, if we go to the next slide, please. And then the following slide after this. Um, as Mr. Kunnack mentioned, this is a shell and core adaptive reuse uh, for the skinny Roberts and building located at four thirty-three Wood Street. This is just a quick kind of context diagram to help locate you. Um, north is located to the upper right-hand corner of the screen and the point would be actually page north of this. Next slide, please. Contextually, this is in the uh, downtown business district. It uh, is a fully kind of built-out kind of block in the city comprised of uh, masonry architecture. Um, kind of narrow lots, um, and a kind of wonderful kind of historic kind of uh, uh, integrity to the facades here. Next slide, please. Uh, these are some images of the existing conditions. Um, this is showcasing the kind of the skinny building uh, shown in the upper left-hand corner, which is adjacent to the Roberts Building. Um, historically, these buildings were never kind of connected inside. Um, and as such, their floor plates do not quite align. And we'll talk a little bit more about the the methods employed to kind of get some adequate fire stairs in place for the skinny building. Additionally, the building located at four thirty-three Mama Lucius, which is kind of towards the lower end of the page is an older structure, um, kind of experiencing some kind of um, age-related issues. Um, and has been determined that it would be necessary for this structure to be demolished. Um, that it would be difficult to save uh, for the future. Next slide, please. Uh, this, this slide just shows you some kind of interior imagery inside both the Roberts and Skinny Buildings. Um, again, as mentioned, the Roberts Building was historically a jewelry retailer building in downtown Pittsburgh. Uh, the safe is still present in the building as well as some of the original interior furnishings. Um, and the Skinny Building was historically kind of a lower-level retail and food and beverage vendor with seating on the upper floors. Next slide, please. This is just to give you an idea of some of the kind of inspiration imagery we utilize when uh, thinking about the exterior of these buildings. Um, as I previously mentioned, this is just a shell and core project with interior fit out coming much later. Uh, but the general intent is kind of to, to kind of look at these things holistically so that um, the floor plates are kept flexible and adaptable for future fit outs. Next slide, please. These are just some ideas of kind of um, canopies. We have some existing canopies on both on the Roberts Building as well as some proposed canopies on the infrastructure located at four thirty-three, as well as the Skinny Building itself. Along with the idea of kind of activating that lower ground plane along the street with some operable flip-up windows and doors. Next slide, please. And these are just some images of some kind of um, some contextual kind of brick, modern brick architecture. Looking at ways to kind of uh, emulate kind of historic proportions while kind of acknowledging the fact that uh, these are newer buildings uh, but still pay homage to the past. Next slide, please. And we can proceed to the next one. This kind of series will be kind of our facade studies. Uh, we'll begin with the Skinny Building. Um, in general, the the intent here is to replace the windows and the existing wood siding and trim with aluminum clad wood windows as well as painted PVC millwork. Um, these um, items will be substantially more stable in our climate region and allow the building to kind of uh, renew itself and last a little bit longer. Additionally, the roof for the Skinny Building is supposed to be a simulated melt metal tile roof emulating the existing uh, clay tile that's on the structure. And then as previously mentioned, we're looking at kind of activating that lower ground plane with some flip-up windows and doors so that uh, ground floor retail and or food and beverage could be accommodated by future tenants. Um, we can go to the next slide. While we do that, this is an image kind of showing the proposed color palette along with those doors being in the open position. Uh, generally speaking, the intent is to keep this building unoccupied, given that it is so narrow and difficult to kind of get the requisite kind of means of egress for general public up here. With that being said, the lower level is currently slated to be occupied by either dry good retail and or food and beverage, walk-up food and beverage with the upper floors of this structure being an uninhabited kind of art gallery space that is viewed from the street. Uh, we'll talk a little in more detail and cut in future slides about what is proposed for those upper levels. Next slide, please. These are some supplemental views, just kind of showing a different perspective along uh, Forbes Avenue looking at the Skinny Building. Uh, if you go to the next slide, you'll see those windows in the up position. So you'll see the the two outer bays are kind of operable windows with the two middle bays being fixed glass and doors. Next slide, please. Again, this is just another perspective. We're now at the corner of Forbes and Wood Street. We can see the canopy of the Roberts Building and the proposed facade redesign there, along with the proposed facade of the Skinny Building. And the next slide will go, we'll show you those doors in the upward position. Next slide. Um, the following slides discuss the kind of the proposed art program for the Skinny Building. Uh, there are currently two options on the table. One being a digital art installation that would be accomplished via LED screens. And the kind of the second alternative proposal would be a physical art installation, which would be accompanied by accomplished by shadow boxes. Next slide, please. These are just talking about the signage considerations. Uh, this is kind of up for discussion today in terms of this being classified kind of art and not signage, um, and how that that program be curated uh, by the clients. Next slide, please. This gives you an idea of what that would look like at night uh, with the LED digital art installation screens. Uh, you can see that the bays are kind of um, divided up with screens directly behind glass so that they could be viewed from the street by the general public. But again, this building would be uninhabited by the general public only for kind of general maintenance of these programs would be accessed. Next slide, please. This is a little more information on those LED screens. Next slide, please. And then this slide kind of addresses the physical art proposal. Again, we can go to the next slide. Uh, this would be accomplished through kinds of shadow boxes, which would effectively kind of be like um, a retail store window display. Next slide. This slide is looking at kind of the three buildings, so the Skinny Roberts and the proposed infrastructure four thirty-three um, and in conjunction with one another. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, for the base of Roberts Building, um, for those of you who are familiar with what that building looks like today, it was recently occupied by a seven eleven and the facade was rehabilitated sometime in the eighties. Um, with kind of limited glass and limited kind of views on the street. Uh, the proposal here is to kind of open that back up. Uh, this is not kind of restoring it to its historical kind of original facade, but something that is compatible with the historical architecture. So again, this would feature a kind of a recessed vestibule to get the door openings off of the sidewalks, large glass openings, and roughly a rough-cut granite base under those glass openings. Next slide, please. This slide is looking at the proposed materiality of the infrastructure located at four thirty-three. Uh, you can see we have three kind of general materials specified. Metal panel, which we have at the top of the structure, a brick kind of base for the structure, and obviously glass for the the windows in the structure. Uh, previously, we had kind of shown these materials and indicated that uh, we were still kind of in in an assessment period of looking at these materials. I'm sure you're all aware of the supply chain issues in terms of what is available and how soon it can be gotten to a site. And so generally, the color palette is established. Uh, what just may change is the general supplier of the material at this time. Next slide, please. These are just some supplemental views, uh, the one on the left being a kind of a bird's eye perspective, looking at the three structures in unison. And the one to the right is kind of a street view on Wood Street, a little further down, looking at the three of these. And you can see how we're kind of keeping the canopy low on four thirty-three to kind of acknowledge the Roberts as kind of the crown jewel or one of the crown jewels of this composition and to pay deference to that kind of being the primary front door for this establishment. Next slide, please. This is a nighttime rendering, I can just to give you some uh, a better idea of what this would look like at night with the kind of site lighting um, and kind of architectural features previously discussed. Next slide. And then with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Ryan to talk about the historical studies and how that informed the process on this project.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Ryan England working with Milton the God Architect as the historical consultants. We can go to the next slide. So I'm gonna give you some context about the history of these buildings as it relates to the design decisions and the restoration of the buildings. Um, if there are more in-depth questions, glad to answer them, but I'm gonna fly through pretty briefly. Um, the Roberts Building was built in about eighteen sixties. We don't have a precise date. Um, it was built next to another building that was thirty-six feet wide, um, where the Skinny Building now stands. But in nineteen oh three, the city of Pittsburgh widened uh, what was then Diamond Way to create Forbes Avenue. So they took thirty feet away from the uh, building, they demolished the building um, and gave back a six-foot wide parcel, which is why we have a full depth a a full uh, depth six-foot wide parcel in the middle of downtown. Um, the parcel changed hands a number of times, and in the nineteen twenties, Lewis Hendel was operating a fruit and vegetable stand on the site, and he built the Skinny Building. There was a lot of speculation in the press at the time about why he built the building. There were even reporters standing in the hallways of the Bureau of Building Inspection, asking questions. Um, but none of the papers of the day uh, were able to obtain an answer of why the building was built. And uh, you know, people still speculate. But we have some photos here from the nineteen thirties showing the building as it was in its very early days. You see that the building has more than one tenant on the ground floor. Um, you've got kind of in the rear wood part, more towards Market Square, the fruit and vegetable vendor. Those uh, windows open up and the the fruit and vegetables are sold directly on the sidewalk. You see a very small watch vendor, um, and another tenant that we can't even quite tell what it is. Um, you've got a bunch of different awnings, a variety of signage. Um, the block was very vibrant, alive and street-facing. Uh, next slide. These are photos from the nineteen fifties when Ray Wells Diner operated a hot dog stand uh, in the kind of more Wood Street half of the building. Uh, the counters were very shallow, the seats were very shallow. You can see doors opening up for all the seats uh, facing Forbes Avenue. Um, so a very tight place to work, uh, and that was actually the longest-standing tenant of the building, operated from nineteen thirty-eight to nineteen seventy-one. When you look at the designs that we have presented for the Skinny Building with the sidewalk facing the flip-up windows, the rhythms of the um, glass and the openings, we've really tried to stay true to the history of the building um, and provide flexibility for the next century of tenants and uses of the building. And then the Upper Stories were really only used as a restaurant for about three years by the Lincoln Restaurant from nineteen twenty-eight to nineteen thirty-one. Um, and I really can't explain to you how they operated a restaurant in the Upper Stories of that uh, building. It's very, very narrow. Um, but it didn't stay open for very long, and generally the spaces upstairs have been vacant, which is uh, why uh, the art program is a a perfect fit for the building. And in fact, an art program was operated previously um, in the building for a good number of years, um, prior to that it becoming vacant a couple of years ago. Uh, next slide, please. Moving on to the Roberts Building, the Upper Stories of the Roberts Building are historic and they're in pretty good shape, so the restoration there is really straightforward. From the awning on down, things From the awning on down, things are a little different. On the photo on the top left, you see the historic photo of the awning. And then on the top right, you see the current photo of the awning. The awning that's currently there is, it's the same structure as the historic awning, but some of the detail, the details significantly less ornate. It's not an inappropriate historic awning, and we're not going to change that design. But below that, right now, we've got the seven eleven facade, which is not very attractive. But historically, you have this jeweler's facade that you see in the top left photo. Not really necessarily set up for a lot of volume of people flowing in and out, and definitely not accessible. We looked to some other historic precedents and came up with a design that we've presented to you, which is a nice mixture of respecting the heritage of the building and just instituting good traditional proportional design in a modern functional setting. So that's all I have at this time. I'll turn it back to DJ.
Excellent. Thank you, Ryan. The next following kind of slides, I'll walk you through some of the floor plans. Generally speaking, what you'll see on the left hand side of the screen is the existing floor plan. And then what you will see on the right hand side is the proposed floor plan. So beginning with level one, you can kind of see what moves are generally establishing how this building will stack up to the remaining floors. The intent is to demolish the structure located at four thirty-three to build a new structure there. And this new structure will house one of our fire stairs and one of our passenger elevators, as well as the restrooms and the cantile space for both the Roberts and the four thirty-three structure. Generally, this this intent was employed so that we could kind of mitigate any kind of excessive kind of demolition in the Roberts Building and to keep those kinds of those critical infrastructure services in the four thirty-three side of the project. So looking at the Roberts Building, you'll see that currently, again, this is just a shell and core package, but the idea here is to keep this as a flexible event collaboration space with kind of back of house space, a freight elevator, and an improved fire stair to service this structure as well as the skinny building. We go to next slide, please. You can see that this is kind of stacking up pretty faithfully through the structure. This is level two. So you'll see that the building located at four thirty-three is a carbon copy of the floor plan that was shown below. And then we're looking at kind of again, the stair and freight elevator and Robert's stacking up as well. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, that this project, we were just in the shell and core phase. Fit out will be coming later. The client is in early discussions with a potential tenant, which would be a social club function that we're relatively excited to be entertaining for this. We believe it would be a good kind of activator for the site and an amenity for downtown Pittsburgh. Hence why, you know, in the Roberts Building, we're not showing any kind of interior partitions just yet, just again, core functions. Next slide, please. We can keep going to the next one as well. Actually, go back when I will talk to this one a bit. You will see here that the rear stair located in Roberts, we are providing a rear corridor to access the skinny building as well as at the freight elevator. This will be the primary kind of means of access for the structure. And that's kind of what we, the manner we had to go about employing this this feature, again, because of the floor plates not stacking up through the structures. Next slide, please. And here, again, we're just stacking. The general intent for this level is there are some existing partitions in Roberts. Assuming those can be saved with the paneling, we like to preserve those for the future tenant for the space. Next slide, please. And then level five is kind of our, one of our top floors. Again, we're just stacking up through here. You can kind of see there's a clear story indicated that pops up on the roof as well as our stairs and elevators are getting stacking up through the structure. Next slide, please. And then there is a proposal for a rooftop terrace on the new infrastructure located at four thirty-three. It would be under fifty occupants with the stair from the Roberts Building and the freight elevator popping up to access that amenity. Next slide. These are the sections, just to kind of show you how these buildings stack together. Again, kind of critical for this discussion is just to see how the floor plates in the skinny building, which is shown page left, do align with the floor plates of Roberts Building and the floor plates of the proposed building, the infrastructure at four thirty-three are aligning with those in Roberts to provide an accessible structure. Next slide. Just some additional sections, kind of showing some of the nice kind of double height spaces these buildings currently feature. Next slide. And in the appendix, which we will not review here today, are just some supplemental slides on the art program for your reference, so if you wish to consult these, we can just skip through these to the thank you page if you like. And that completes our presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you for the thorough presentation. At this time, we take public testimony. If there was, is anyone present that would like to give testimony, please raise your hand. Are there any hands raised?
I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Dick?
Yeah, I just wanted a little clarification. I'm sorry. The access to the upper floors of the skinny building, did I just understand you to say that was from the rear of the Roberts Building or did I misunderstand that?
You are correct. There is a stair provided in the rear of Roberts to access the skinny building.
But there's no, no accessible, public access to the upper floors of the skinny building then?
That is correct. Those floors are uninhabited by the general public because that is just for the art program and will only be used for maintenance and kind of upkeep of those installations.
But all those could theoretically be visible from the front of the building? The art work?
Correct. Yes, the art is meant to be viewed from the street.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments, Commissioners? I would like to thank Mr. England for the walk down memory lane. I love seeing photos of what things have have looked like and how they've changed over time. Funny, sometimes you get to so much change that you wish you were back where you started. But thank you very much for that. I appreciate you sharing. Commissioners, at this time, our recommended motion is to approve with two conditions, and that would be that DOMI shall review the final plans and issue the necessary DOMI approvals prior to issuing the zoning approval and the final construction documents shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the final record of zoning approval. Do I have a motion from the floor?
So moved. Commissioner Mango.
Commissioner Mango, thank you. And Commissioner Dick, it looked like you. Okay, second. So Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk?
Aye.
Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mango?
Aye.
And Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries, and thank you very much for the presentation. You have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to the last agenda item under hearing and action, which is item number three, That will be Carnegie Mellon University Institutional Master Plan and Zone Change. There's been some revision, and Mr. Kuhnack will present that to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Again, if there's applicants who would like to be promoted, please raise your hand so that we can find you in the list. And Bob, can we have a sound check?
Yep. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Kevin Kuhnack with the Department of City Planning. This is application number DCP-MPZC-2021-01727 for a zone change petition and new institutional master plan for Carnegie Mellon University. The zone change petition is to change the zoning of essentially two locations, the educational, medical, and institution. The first location is Neville at Fifth Avenue. Parcels fifty-two J sixty and fifty-two J fifty, currently residential multi-unit high density. The second location is along Devonshire Road, parcels fifty-two K one seventy-five, fifty-two K one eighty-two, fifty-two K one eighty-five, fifty-two K one eighty-eight, fifty-two K one ninety-one, currently residential single unit detached, low density. The change from the briefing is to remove the third location presented in the briefing that was at the corner of Forbes and Margaret Morrison, parcel fifty-two C ninety-three. That is currently and will remain residential two unit low density. So that was withdrawn by the applicant. There is no development in the ten year development envelope proposed for these locations requested in the zone change petition. All the sites in the ten year development envelope are already within the EMI zoning district. A notice of this planning commission hearing was mailed to a budding property owner's twenty-one days in advance, posted onsite and posted on the city planning notices website. The institutional master plan includes twenty development sites in the ten year development envelope. Of note, the development site indicated as site seventeen is within RMVH zoning district and is advisory only, not regulated by the IMP. The applicant team participated in the city's performance targets program. This program reviews performance targets generated based on city and twenty thirty district goals. Targets include energy use, energy generation, water use, standards and certifications, stormwater, open space, entry canopy, public art, neighborhood enhancement, mobility, waste, and resilience. This process, this process was designed to go hand in hand with the IMP Best Practices Guide adopted by the Planning Commission in two thousand and eighteen. The TIS has been approved by the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure. This application is within the registered community organization areas for Scorehill Urban Coalition, Oakland Playing and Development Corporation, Oakland Business Improvement District. The D I M reports are included in your hearing report. And the recommended motion is that the City Planning Commission recommends approval to City Council for the zone change petition to rezone seven parcels associated with Carnegie Mellon University from residential multi-unit high density and residential single unit attached low density to educational, medical, institution, and recommend approval to City Council of the Institutional Master Plan for Carnegie Mellon University dated September twenty twenty-two. And with that, I will turn it over to our applicants.
Good afternoon, everyone. Ralph Horgan, the Associate Vice President for Campus Design and Facility Development here at Carnegie Mellon. Our address, I guess formally for this would be five thousand Forbes Avenue, Pittsburgh one five two one three. Although I live on Brighton Road on the north side, we'll, for this exercise, will be using the university's address. This has been the culmination of two and a half year process. We're very excited to present this. Because of all the work, if you indulge, I would like to thank our CMU team, Bob and Jen and Dawn and Megan, both Ashley and Eric from UDA, and then Rich and Todd from GAI for all the engineering aspects of things. In addition, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the planning staff for all the back and forth and all the constructive notes and thoughts that they brought to the table for us. And certainly would like to thank the commission. We are very hopeful that you, this presentation will meet with your approval. We think it's the best product we can do. We think it's good for the city. We think it's good for the neighborhoods, and we certainly do think it's good for the university. So thank you very much for the opportunity and I'll present, I'll pass it over to Bob and team to to roll through the deck.
Thanks, Ralph. We go to the next slide, please. I think Kevin, you're driving, right? Whoever, whomever is driving, we'll just say next slide. Thanks. And thanks, Ralph, for the introduction. Bob Reppe with Carnegie Mellon University, as Ralph said, five thousand Forbes Avenue. As Ralph noted, we have, we're really, we've been at the, we're nearing the end, second to last stop of our long long two-year plan on our institutional master plan with lots of really great help from our consultants, as well as from both people on campus, as well as neighbors, as well as city staff. Noting here, both Jen Beck, who is noted here with the asterisk, Jen Beck and I will be kind of tag teaming as we move through the presentation here. I'll go at about forty percent of the way through, let her take over forty percent, and then I'll pick up the last little bit as we roll into the very end of it. So if we, why don't we just get started? We can roll to the first slide or the next slide, please. And we wanted to show a schedule of what we have been up to, and this is really important for the long and very deliberative process that we have engaged on. Like we do with all of our projects, we want to make sure that everybody knows what we're up to. We have a lot of discussions about this. You can see we started over a year and a half ago on our outreach. We're going to talk about how many meetings we had here in a few moments. But we've been doing outreach for the last year and a half with everything from public meetings with neighbors to on-campus groups, to special focus groups on campus. Two, we actually had three sets of town hall or two sets of town halls, one on campus, and then two that we had off campus with our neighbors. We had a series of open meetings at various times of the day over different days to try to get cast as broadened out as possible in these kind of weird hour, weird days of collecting public information for input into the master plan. We think that the document is a, is a better document because of that. And we're going to show you how we got there. So, next slide, please. At the very beginning, the very first thing that we did when we started working on the master plan two years ago is we developed these ten or these twelve really important principles for what our master plan would be based off of. We based it off of the five big ideas of design, experience, mobility, context, and opportunity. And you can see that each of these has kind of subcomponents of it. These, these kind of core tenants became the tent poles of everything that we looked at when we developed the master plan. From our development sites that we're looking at, to our mobility plan, to our sustainability plan, to our neighborhood engagement. And it talks about reinforcing our connection of design and our university values and building buildings that are timeless, and also making memorable campus both for those who are on campus and those that are moving through or adjacent to campus. We want to talk about the importance of the mobility. We're going to call it the upside down wedding cake that Jen's going to talk a little bit about and why that's so important. And our context in the city, you know, with the university has moved, especially over the last twenty years or so, from being a more insular, inward looking university to being a much more public piece of the, a part of the public realm of the city of Pittsburgh. And we think that that's an important part of what we're looking at, especially when it comes to Craig Street and Shunley Park. And then last thing that we noticed, we wanted a master plan that is, that is, provides the stability and the the understanding of where the university is going for our neighbors and for the city, but also one that can adapt and respond to a dynamic future, because we don't know what the next big thing is coming around the bend. That we want to have a master plan that can be prepared for that. So if we go to the next slide, please. This outlines what the whole planning process, I'm not going to read through all of this, but I really want to, really going to focus, if you look at the images on the right, really, we are building on the shoulders of giants. We have been working on this, this campus for over a hundred and twenty years, and we're very excited that this master plan will build upon that. And we hope a hundred years from now, people will look back on this as an important point of Carnegie Mellon's evolution over time in the city of Pittsburgh. You can see on the left how we worked this. We spent a lot of time doing background in getting our consultants engaged. And then we did a long thorough planning process for over almost a full year, and we've done another year of research, our research and outreach that we've been doing throughout. And then now moving into the approval process. Next slide, please. And when we talk about the outreach, this slide- And when we talk about the outreach, this slide really shows what we've been doing. This has been a lot of meetings that Dawn and Megan and Jen and Ralph and I have gone to over time. We, it's over a hundred meetings. We're about forty percent of them were on campus meetings. About forty percent of them were neighbor meetings and about twenty percent of them were meetings that we held with various city officials. We think that this was a really important process. We went through this. It is testified in the letters of support we got. We actually have seven letters of support from all of the neighborhood organizations um and institutions around us. We have received letters of support from the Oakland Task Force, the Bellefield Area Citizens Association, the Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy, the Oakland Business Improvement District, the Carnegie Museums of Pittsburgh and the Squirrel Hill Urban Coalition, all who support the adoption of this institutional master plan. And that's because we have our long-term working relationship and kind of friendly relationship that we have with our neighbors and our organizations. Next slide, please. We, to, we're going to Swiss move now from the process to talk a little bit about what is in the document. I'm going to go through some of this stuff fast um and get to the kind of the meaty parts here in a few moments. We talk about our institutional planning area. As you can see, uh, the outline in red on this map is everything that the university owns in the area. You can see that there's a parcels that are kind of outside of the blue EMI district. As Kevin noted, some of them were asking to move into the EMI district, some of them we are not, and we'll talk about why. Um, and it also talks about, a lot about looking at our neighbors where we have Shenley Park on their south, Squirrel Hill to our east, of course, Shady Side and Oakland uh to our north and west. Next slide, please. One of the things that the first thing we do is we spend a lot of time talking about existing conditions in the document. We spend about twenty pages of the document, probably about twenty percent of the document, actually, looking at various components of campus. The, where the, the existing roads are, where the existing sewer lines are and steam lines, what our building uses are. What buildings we built recently, what buildings are lead certified? We think that's important to kind of understand where we have been to where we are today, which, both of which then help direct us to where we're going in the future with this ten year plan. Next slide, please. And when we talk about where we're going, we really focused on kind of four big ideas of what institutional needs are. The notion that we want to have a, a strategy for campus growth, knowing that we have limited land resources and using our existing land and buildings to connect from the historic core of campus to the north campus and to Craig Street, often through additional de, density. We also looked then at a strategy for academic spaces to enhance and expand teaching spaces on campus that maximize flexibility. A strategy for quality public spaces. Even more, I would argue than our, our buildings are great. We love our buildings and we're very proud of them. But we would argue in many ways, our public spaces are what make our campus so special and unique. In one of the, and the, this master plan actually talks about how we want to continue to grow those public spaces, we come part, the greater part of the urban context of ci, of the city. And then lastly, a strategy, continue to be a leader in sustainable building and operating practices. And this is something that Jen's going to talk quite a bit about. Next slide, please. As we get ready to launch into the ten year cycle, the master plan, one of the things that docu, that the zoning code asks us to look at is to identify areas that we might be looking at beyond these ten years. These three areas, which are basically identified as the u, the existing university-owned housing along Margaret Morrison, the properties along the east side of Devonshire Road and some disparate properties that we own kind of throughout the Henry Winthrop Fillmore area as these areas that we're going to continue to look at. We do not have any development projects proposed in any of these three areas in this master plan. But these are areas that we think where we are now, looking at ten years from now, things that we might be looking at. But that's just making sure that we're understanding about where we're going as a university. Uh, next slide, please. So this is where we jump into the really important part, the first kind of really important part of the institutional master plan, which is the ten year plan. Remember the way the city zoning code is set up is that we are obligated to provide anything that might be considered, we might be interested in building over the next ten years of the cycle and the history of this existing, this hopefully to be, hope to be approved institutional master plan. And so what we've identified, as Kevin noted, we've identified twenty potential development sites. They're shown on red on this map. Just as a reference, the three properties that are shown in purple with the three buildings shown in purple are buildings that are currently under construction on campus that this planning commission has recently approved. All part of the existing two thousand and twelve institutional master. We go to the next slide. We can start to talk more about specifically about these twenty development sites. And more importantly, we'll talk about how we broke these, the campus into three really important districts of how we're identifying where these are. And you can see the majority of these development sites are really focused on the historic core along Forbes Avenue. Um, uh, both the historic core and the north campus along Forbes Avenue and in the Craig Street district at the corner of Forbes and Craig Street. We're going to talk a little bit about what that means as we talk about these. If we can go to the next slide, please. We're going to du, dig in quickly into each of the three sub-districts of campus and talk about the development sites. We have on the slideshow here, we have each of these in kind of fine detail if we want to dig into them a little bit more. Uh, I know we talked a lot about these in the briefing, which feels like it was a year ago, but it was maybe only six or seven weeks ago. But we talked a lot about those and we have them here for reference as well. But I think the key on the, when we talk about the historic core of campus is looking to identify new or kind of expansion opportunities for academics and research spaces. This is the core of campus where the heart of our, our kind of teaching, education, research are happening. And so we're always looking for potential sites that we could use to enhance that of the ability. One of the things that makes Carnegie Mellon great is our ability to do interconnected, inter, uh interdisciplinary uh education and research in proximity to these buildings, between buildings. For example, between the College of Engineering and the School of Computer Science is important to make that interconnectedness work. And so the proper, a lot of the things that you're looking at here, especially kind of in the core of campus, are really allowing for new academic buildings in the long-term future of the university. It's important to note that with the exception of one of them that we're going to talk about at the end, we don't really have any specific plans for any of these right now. But we're, these are placeholders of things we're going to look at. So while we think that number four, which could be a replacement for Warner Hall and Sire Hall, we think that that may happen. Someday, we have no immediate plans or even short-term plans or middle-term plans for that matter for those buildings for a lot of these sites right now. We're identifying them as we go forward. We go to the next slide. I'm just going to talk, just kind of breeze through each of these. New operations building along the hollow, along the railroad would allow for an expansion of our facilities operation along the railroad. It included, it would include a trail easement. We've been working for a long time with the city to bring the Eliza Furnace Trail up to the railroad crossing at Neville underneath Forbes Avenue. And this, this, this development of this operations building would continue that. That movement of our facilities operations to this site will then open up their existing site, which is located as number two here as a potential new academic building in the future. The third on this page is a potential to re-engage or kind of infill the courtyard between Hamburg Hall and Smith Hall or maybe expand, replace Smith Hall with a future building in the rear of that. You wouldn't see anything from Forbes Avenue, but it would be an expansion that could allow for the expansion of the Heinz College. Next slide, please. I spoke a little bit about the replacement of Warner Hall and Sire Hall right in the corner of Forbes and Morewood. While we think that that may happen someday, we do not have any immediate plans for it, but the idea is it would be a long-term expansion piece for that as a kind of prime academic site. Uh, the next two are smaller expansions that we are actually carrying forward from the last master plan. It's important to note that of the twenty development sites that we have in this master plan, ten of them are projects that we have carried over from the two thousand and twelve master plan. Projects that frankly, we didn't get to build. Um, that we think that are important, that we want to continue to carry into the twenty twenty two master plan. And both number five, which is an addition to the Purnell Center for the tech components of our drama school and number six for student support functions are both of those, those, of those, that nature where they're brought forward from the last master plan. Next slide, please. In fact, number seven on this one is also that, which is uh the expansion of Margaret Morrison Carnegie Hall for the College of Fine Arts. This is the third of many of the ten that are exp, uh, continuations from the last master plan. Number eight is a new one that we're looking at. And again, this is a long-term vision, but the idea of a potential replacement for Donner Hall, uh, which is the residence hall that's right along Margaret Morrison Street with a new building that would allow for additional density for both residential and academic uses. Um, number nine is a small one-story piece. It's a very small piece that you're hopefully going to be seeing come before the planning commission in the not-too-distant future uh for a small infill underneath the building, underneath the legs that hold the building up. That would be for a new student commons. Next slide, please. And in this slide, we're going to shift from the core of campus to the north campus. This is basically everything from Forbes Avenue up to Fifth Avenue. And as Kevin noted at the very beginning, you can see in the upper left the properties that we're looking to rezone at four, at fifth and Neville. We are, while we're proposing to rezone those because they are at, owned by university, we do not propose any new developments along Fifth Avenue. In fact, everything that we're proposing um in the north campus area really focuses on either kind of the continuing build out of the Morewood parking lot that we did at the new Tepper Business School or reconfiguration, rethinking of what the Greek quad is at the northeast corner of Forbes and Morewood. Next slide, please. Um, the, so the first three of these that we're going to bring forward are all continuations. Again, these were all in the last master plan. Um, the two thousand and twelve master foot plan and being, are being brought forward in this master plan, which includes a new academic expansion for the Tepper Business School between the exit, the new building and W Q E D building, potential new building or buildings. It may be one building, it may be two buildings. On the remainder of the Morewood parking lot, that would be for new academic uses. And then a small student support infill at the corner of Forbes and Morewood, the, the south, at the northwest corner of Forbes and Morewood for new student service support at the ground floor of that. Next slide. These three items are all new to this master plan. Well, actually, September thirteen is a kind of a continuation, but a rethinking of what we had carried forward as this idea of a building at the corner of Forbes and Morewood, but it's kind of part of a bigger piece, which is a rethinking of the existing Greek quad in a way that allows for additional density, but allows for Greek living to continue to happen on the Greek quad, but also does it in a manner that steps down as it moves to the north and to the east as we approach our neighboring properties. It's, it's really important if you look into it, look at the heights on here. We'll talk about this in our, in urban design guidelines in a moment. But also the, the setbacks on how we're deliberately stepping the buildings down as they move away from Forbes Avenue, as they move away from Morewood Avenue as well. Uh, next slide, please. The last area is the Craig Street area. In this, we have a couple of projects that are carryovers from the last master plan. We also note in this one, this is the one that is a little bit unique, number seventeen in here, which we'll talk about in a second. Um, Craig Street is a very different area for us. It is a different, is a district that is multi, is owned by many property owners. It is a much more urban district. Um, and it's not going to be a kind of more traditional campus, and it's a lot more about infill buildings, buildings that are very urban in nature. We think that that's really important. We like that. We want to, everything that we're talking about will continue that. We go to the next slide, please. We can look at some of these. The first three on here uh are kind of piecemeal pieces, kind of scattered um in the nor, in the Craig Street area. Uh, first is a reconfiguring of the existing Shirley apartments for new uses, uh, but not doing any, leaving the exterior of the building. The second one, the new residential building potentially could place Woodfield Hall on Craig Street. As, as Kevin noted, this is not zone D M I, this is zone R M, uh, M, R M H, excuse me, residential multi-unit high density. But because it is within a thousand feet of the core of campus, we thought it important to include it, showing that our kind of thoughtfulness and where our planning is going on that. Uh, number eighteen is a small addition that we look, that we might contemplate under the Mellon, uh, the Mellon Institute on the south side at the, near the loading docks. And it's might mainly meant because most people that enter Mellon Institute enter through the loading dock because it's closest to campus. And so the idea would be, could we build a very kind of contemporary piece that would work with the historic nature of that building that would kind of form an entry pavilion on that? That would obviously, since it's noted, it, it's located in the Oakland Civic Historic, Historic District. It would not only be have to be reviewed by the planning commission uh through a develop, project development plan, but it also would require being reviewed and approved by the city's historic review commission as well. And then last slide on the development sites, please. Um, there's, these two are both continuations of what currently is in the existing master plan. But it's important to note that one of them, number twenty, is a project that we are starting to move forward on on a new uh R K Mellon Hall of Sciences building that we're looking at, at that site. And so that's one that we're hoping that you'll be seeing sometime within the next uh nine months, eight to nine months or so that we might, they'll be, be bringing forward for you as a project to look at. Uh, let's go to the next section, which talks about urban design guidelines. I'm going to really breeze through these so we can move on to uh mobility. But any, and we developed in uh urban design guidelines specifically for each of the three districts. The historic core, the north campus and the Craig Street areas are all very different. Uh, both architecturally as well as some, with their urban kind of standards. And so what we developed is a series of building standards, public realm standards and transportation standards that apply to all development sites within those districts. But they're different slightly in between each of the districts. Obviously, the historic core is a much more campus setting, and so it has different urban design guidelines than say the Craig Street area, which is a more urban setting. We go to the next slide, you can start to see how we addressed a lot of those. So for each of the three areas, we created very specific written guidelines, and we're going to talk about how we've added to those based on uh really great comments from the planning commission. We've also created a series of drawings that show how each of those work, especially in the major development areas like um along Forbes Avenue in the case of the historic core or at the Donner site. We go to the next site. You can see we did the same thing for the north campus where we looked at both the Morewood parking lot and how those step backs and step downs were as well as the potential for thinking about the Greek quad in the future. That's really important to look at sections M, A and C on this. They're the north-south sections that show how we intend that if we were, if and when we do develop at the more, the, the Greek quad at Forbes and More, that we would do it in a nature that actually steps the buildings down away from the residential buildings. Section C really shows that we're, the existing uh residence house on Devon Road is shown and the buildings that we would propose would actually be lower than that building at that, at that point, taking advantage of the grade that is happening across that site. And then finally, the last slide in the urban design guidelines is the Craig Street area showing the two sites at Forbes and Craig Street, especially the science site. We know it's a relatively large site that's been proposed, and so there's a whole series of step backs. So the building steps down as it approaches both the museum as well as uh Forbes Avenue. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jen and move on to the next section where we're going to talk about mobility, sustainability and neighborhood engagement.
All right. Thanks, Bob. So Bob mentioned our upside down wedding cake, which you can see in the graphic at the bottoms right of the screen. That indicates our approach to mobility um across the campus. Pedestrians being the most important form of mobility that we want to protect and enhance um followed by biking or, or wheeled mobility devices as we talk about them sometimes, followed by transit, whether it's um public transit through uh Pittsburgh Regional Transit or our shuttle system. And then thinking about um passenger vehicles, whether it's carpool and, or ride shares, you know, Lyft, Uber and the like, and then finally, single occupancy vehicles. The overarching goal of the mobility section of the I M P really provides strategies for um implementing this, this wedding cake, whether it's improved pedestrian pathways or separating uh bicycles or scooters from pedestrians, increasing connectivity um to benefit not just our campus community, but also our neighbors, particularly for uh access to, to Shenley Park. Um, we've also been working with our neighbor institutions, uh, University of Pittsburgh, uh, being one of them to think about how we can um pool our resources uh in our, in our shuttle strategy so that uh you don't have one shuttle vehicle going down somebody's street with three kids from C M U and then five minutes later a pit shuttle goes by on the same route with, with two kids. How can we, how can we pool our resources to better uh to more effectively serve our communities and maybe get a few vehicles um off the roads? Um, the overarching goal when we, when think about parking would be to say that we want to have no net new parking on the campus. Uh, now, that doesn't mean that when we construct some of the, should we construct uh some of these new buildings that Bob talked about that we wouldn't have parking. It just means that we would be uh sort of establishing a number that, of parking spots that we have right now and looking to keep that number the same. Next slide. So this map indicates the diverse ways that we would want to improve the mobility network, um whether it's through in, improving the bike Pittsburgh network that there, they C M U campus is kind of a, kind of a dead zone. It's kind of a, almost a barrier um from some of the shady side neighborhoods to Shenley Park. So connecting that, that network um together as well as creating some infrastructure that would, uh, through our campus, that would allow uh connections to the, the Eliza Furnace Trail uh through, down through the hollow. Bob talked about the, the shared views path that uh that we're looking to develop uh partnership with the city. This map also talks about things sort of beyond, beyond bicycles. Um, talks about uh the B R T stations, which although presently in this, in this phase may not be, are likely not coming as far as the C M U campus. But we're hopeful that um eventually that those will be implemented and we intend to put infrastructure in place on our campus, on our, on our property to support that. Uh, see, neighborways, which have been successfully implemented in other locations in the city. Um, we would also like to see implemented sort of on the, towards the Shenley Park side of our campus on Margaret Morrison Tech and Fruit Streets. We think that the, the traffic calming methods that have been employed by neighborways are have proved to be very successful and would, would help to make the campus safer. would help to make the campus safer for pedestrians or cyclists. Um, just give it more of a, more of a neighborhood feel that we would like to cultivate uh, on the campus. Next slide, please. So this graphic indicates some of the improvements that we would intend to make uh, across the campus. Everything from, and it sort of encompasses all the different areas of mobility. Bicycle stations, we know, it's indicated that's healthy right here, but we know that that, it's not that the Pogo system, you know, where can we get uh, those cycling stations on our campus? Where can we look at designated areas for scooter parkings? While the scooters, the scooters could be, you know, highly successful, we see many of our students using them. How can we keep them from maybe um, keep them in a, in a, in a defined area? How can we look at um, making the connections sort of very specifically for cyclists that would, it would run along the cut and through the, what's now the, the C F A parking lot to sort of begin, make those, this is all about, all about connections. Um, providing more charging stations as these electric vehicles become more common. Where can we provide those stations um, on the campus? Bob also mentioned Craig Street, that that is sort of its own district. And looking at urban design improvements to that neighborhood community is, mobility is an important component um, of that work as well. Um, finally, with the, with the new, we have Mellon Institute, sort of often at the corner of our, of our property. And we have this new science building that's kind of between the, the historic campus and Mellon Institute. Um, how can we improve the connections in, in, really tie together all the diverse research and work that is going on with, with paths, with, you know, with a bridge, with ways to sort of get people um, interacting again, sort of in person, uh, in a, you know, in a, in a safe way and and more quickly. Um, next slide. So the pedestrian network, we, students, our faculty, staff, we all, we all walk around all the time. There's not a lot of driving back and forth between buildings. And so having a healthy and safe uh, pedestrian network of, you know, sidewalks that try to separate pedestrians from the road with, you know, wider sidewalks, with landscaping that helps with our stormwater management, but also provides a nice buffer, um, looking at all, you know, through the, the entirety of our campus community. And as we do development projects, in implementing those changes um, as we move along, with, as we've seen at the Tepper Project and several of the projects on Fifth Avenue. Forbes, I'm sorry, Fifth and Clyde and Fifth and Neville Apartments. How do we, we want to make sure that we are implementing those same changes um, across the campus. And at the bottom of this slide, sort of six, seven and eight, we'll talk about this a little bit later, but improving the connections to Shenley Park is a very important part of this master plan and, and something that we have spent quite a bit of time uh, focusing on, and we'll, we'll talk more about that in future slides. Next slide, please. So the bike network, this indicates this is what I talked about before, sort of connecting to the existing bike Pittsburgh um, map and really making it publicly known that we welcome cyclists to, to utilize our campus to, to get to Shenley Park or to get down into the hollow and are creating the state infrastructure um, to make that happen. We are a bike friendly university. We have bicycle uh, parking in our new build, you know, many of our new buildings and we're going to continue to, to do that um, as we, as we move forward. Next slide. So parking, first, we, we do have to talk about parking, we did, we had said, no net new parking on the campus, but as we engage in some of these development projects, there will be parking, whether it's uh, whether it's underground parking uh, or whatever solution is appropriate to that project. We are trying to eliminate surface parking and on, on our campus in many places, just because that's, you know, we don't, we don't have another cornfield to go to um, to build a new buildings. And so so many of our surface parking lots is where um, our development opportunities are, but recognizing that there are always, there are going to be folks who, who travel to campus by car, and so making sure that we have um, modern infrastructure to, to support that. Next slide. Actually, if you can go back, once, one slide, thank you. Um, the, the city parking authority does provide um, numerous uh, opportunities for parking along, you know, Markham Marsh and Street and connections to, to Shenley Park. Um, so we, we do have a diversity of, of parking, you know, available, um, not just that we control, but also that's available from the city. Okay, next slide. Okay, now we're going to move on to sustainability. Um, sustainability is a core function of what we do at Carnegie Mellon. It factors into all of our processes. Um, not just in how we, um, you know, heat and cool our buildings and use water, but in our uh, research, in our education. It's, it's a part of, it's part of everything we do, and we're very proud of our uh, long tradition of sustainable practices. There, we do have a couple of goals that we know that we are not finished with the work of sustainability. There is always, there are always new technologies that can be employed, many of which are being felt here at C M U. Um, and as we, it's, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a sort of multifaceted approach where we we know that buildings use a lot of energy. And as we're constructing new buildings, we have a lot of lead buildings, we're going to keep building those. But at the same time, we have our, our historic buildings that we are looking to improve and help those buildings to become more energy efficient over time. Um, see, we, we stopped uh, using um, sorry, in the, in the, in the graphic on the right, we have switched to, to natural gas in two thousand nine, and so you can see how our um, our emissions are down significantly. We analyze how we're doing on a regular basis against other tier one research universities. And then we've been measuring this back, you know, two thousand five and some, some things we've been measuring since two thousand three. Stormwater is a big problem in Western Pennsylvania, and we are going to continue to manage that, not just for the rainwater that falls on our properties, but for water that's coming to our, to our campus from other places. How can we in our development projects and even in other uh, utility infrastructure projects um, work to control that stormwater? Um, and maybe even, you know, reuse it in some places. Next slide. Tree preservation and replacement is another component of the I M P that received, you know, a lot, received a lot of attention. Um, we have a tree inventory that we are going to uh, sort of expand upon and use that to keep track of when we're taking down trees. What are we putting back? Where are we putting it back? University has made a commitment to replacing a hundred and ten percent of, of tree caliber. So if we take a hundred inches of tree down for a development site, we're, we're going to put back one hundred and ten inches of tree. Um, and we're working with our consultants, sort of even after this, this master plan process um, has, you know, gotten to this point. To build that database and to understand, to understand, you know, how we can remove invasive species, replace those with uh, more appropriate species. How can we get more understory? How can we restore uh, some of, some of the forest that, you know, was, was there two hundred years ago before there, before there wasn't Carnegie Mellon? Excuse me. Next slide. So stormwater management in this side, you can see how many sites that are on our campus that already deal with stormwater management, whether it's rain gardens, whether it's um, internal storage, whether it's underground uh, retention that we have, like we have in our, in our mall area. Um, how can we expand upon these great ideas which are all, which have made a big difference in uh, how the campus deals with stormwater, not that we, from time to time, we still, we still do have problems. And so we know that um, this, this work, like so much of the other work, is not, is not finished. We're going to keep looking for um, areas to um, utilize, whether it's uh, natural strategies for managing stormwater, more, more tree canopy, um, or strategies that are, that are built into buildings. Moving forward, you'll see, you'll see more of that. Next slide. So green buildings, again, we have a lot of lead buildings on our campus. We, we had the first lead certified student dormitory in the United States, and since then, um, we've added hundreds of thousands of square feet of lead certified structures. In fact, um, recently, we're over, uh, it's one million square feet of lead certified uh, uh, space um, on the campus. Um, the couple of projects that are underway now, um, Highmark Center, the uh, Fifth and Forbes and Bureau Dormitory and Skate Hall will also be learned, lead certified projects. And it's not just new buildings, we are certifying existing spaces in in our older, in our heritage buildings as well, um, as they, as they become renovated, um, and appropriate to the, to the size and the scope of the project. Next slide. Talked earlier in the mobility section about the importance of pedestrian circulation. Um, we recognize that the open space on our campus is, you know, just as important to, to manage and develop as the development sites themselves. And so we want to ensure we're offering a diversity of types of spaces for our campus community and, and neighbors to enjoy. Um, whether it's grasp, whether it's playing fields, whether it's wooded areas, um, whether it's, you know, pedestrian courtyards with your tables and chairs to sit at. All of these things really come together to help make our campus enrich and enjoyable environment. Next slide. So neighborhood protection, uh, Bob talked about the many meetings that we had with our neighbors, and it was a great opportunity to hear from them. How we can, um, how we as a university can, can be a better neighbor. Um, and those conversations, a lot of conversations um, with um, city planning staff helped us to come up with these five goals that we want to set forth for the next ten years of, of this master plan and beyond. We know that living next to a college campus is not always um, not always a positive thing. And so moving forward, we want to be able to manage those negative impacts um, on, on our neighbors. Um, by rezoning, let's say, zone what we own. We want to reach out and make connections with the community, sort of go out into the community and share the good, good things that are going on within the university with them. Um, Craig Street, every great college has a great street and Craig Street, Craig Street is ours. And we want to be able to work with the business community and the residents uh, to develop the, the, we help develop the resources and the programs uh, to help it really thrive and prosper. And number four is, you know, having amenities that are, that are available to everyone, so inviting folks into the campus to enjoy um, our, the natural environment, our public art, our, you know, athletic events. Um, by helping the community to know that they're, that they're certainly welcome to, to come in and, and enjoy what we have to offer. Um, and then finally, I'm having a positive economic impact on the region. I'm proud to have been part of the Pittsburgh community for um, more than a hundred and twenty years. And we want to continue to create jobs, create businesses, sponsor research. Um, inviting tourists to, to come in, to, whether it's prospective students or faculty. And all of that sort of does generate income for, for our local and state developments. Next slide. So community engagement, we have a couple of groups that we, that we met with in our development activities, meetings, uh, Swirl Urban Coalition, O P D C um, and the Oakland Business Improvement District. But in addition to that, we met with um, the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy on a monthly basis. Those meetings are still ongoing. And the Shady Side Exxon Coalition, uh, the Bellfield Area Community Association. Uh, there are many groups that, that we have, that we have met with and, and will continue to meet with um, on a, on a monthly basis, whether or not we have development activities going on, but we'd like to be aware of what's going on in the communities and also help them to, to know what's going on um, with the university, whether it's events that they can attend, um, whether it's closures that, that may be coming up for, for one reason or another, when our, when our students moving in. Um, you know, I guess that's always something that the neighbors would like to know about. Um, we've gotten great feedback from our neighbors and we've had some, some really wonderful conversations um, over the last year. And looking to continue to enrich and grow those relationships. Next slide. So managing impacts on our neighbors. Um, this is where the two request, currently requested zoning changes come into play. We'd like for the properties that we own to sort of fall under the, the very restrictive um, sort of covenants of the institutional master plan. And so having these, uh, these two sets of properties, uh, zoned uh, E M I helps us to do that. We think it helps to um, put our neighbor's sort of minds at ease that because it's not a part of the E M I, we cannot do development on these sites um, for the next ten years. Next slide. Making connections uh, with the community, we do that in a lot of different ways. We have several dozen student-run organizations who focus on service. We have a, a department called the, the the Nexus of Civic Engagement, which whose purpose is to sort of go out into the communities and find ways for students, faculty and staff to be more engaged um, in what, in the activities of our neighbors. Um, education, you know, we're, we, we don't just educate college students or graduate students. We have education at all stages of life, so we have, we operate childcare centers, preschool, kindergarten. Uh, we have teachers who, professors who go out and do direct teaching in K to twelve environments. We also teach the teachers, we have our pre-college program for high school students, and then our Osher Lifelong Learning Institute for uh, folks who are maybe in their, in their, in their second act of life, perhaps, who um, are looking for um, looking for additional instruction on, from, from the university. Furthermore, each of our uh, seven colleges has service learning courses where the purpose of the course itself is to, is to go out and engage with communities to help them uh, solve some problem that the, the community has identified. Our arts and culture, I, something that, you know, see, I've always been a part of C M U. College of Fine Arts was, was a part of C M U when it was founded, um, addition to the, the College of Engineering. It's a great, it's a great dichotomy we have here. And having that arts and culture as something to, to share with the community is, is a university priority, whether it's having, you know, free concerts. Whether it's things that are live streamed, uh, whether it's having um, access to shows that are um, far less, you know, less expensive than maybe, you know, than other, than folks might otherwise be able um, to afford. We, we provide sort of world-class um, arts and culture that's available to the community. Next slide. So Shelley Park has been, the Pittsburgh Parks and Service has been an amazing partner of ours in the development of the institutional master plan. It's this four hundred acre treasure that is just beyond our, our campus boundary. We've looked, we've talked about a lot of different ways to improve uh, Fruit Street, which kind of feels like an overgrown parking lot. Um, and then it's, you know, and with a lot of overgrown hillside. Um, so how can we celebrate this connection? You know, Shenley Park was originally the university's address. It was Carnegie Mellon University, Shenley Park, and that was our front door. And so how can we return um, to celebrate that connection? With improved landscaping, um, a safer, um, safer walkways between the campus and the park for the benefit of not just our campus community, but anybody who's using Shenley Park. Next slide. Okay, so we talked a little bit about um, some of these amenities with the arts. Our libraries are once again open to the public. Um, sort of in the post-COVID, uh, we're happy to have our, our neighbors come in and use our pathways, you know, use our stadium walkway. Spring Carnival is a, is a, is a great campus event that we, we love to have the community uh, attend. We have nineteen, uh, Division Three sports teams, seventeen. So it's great to accompany a basketball game or football game. Um, we have public art uh, all across the campus as well as an online guide. Um, many of our public buildings, which are, are open during the day, folks can walk through and enjoy. Uh, and then the improved connections to Shenley Park, we think is another important amendment. Next slide. All right, so Craig Street. Um, we've had many meetings with the Oakland uh, Business Improvement District, as well as the Craig Street Businesses, about the things that we can help do to help in, improve the area. As Bob said, we're, it's a very diverse um, community. It's business owners, it's residences, University of Pittsburgh is there, um, and so it's really, it's a team effort to think about things that need to be improved, whether it's uh, safer intersections, whether it's more outdoor seating for the restaurants. Whether it's maybe taking away a couple of parking spaces um, to get some more outdoor seating. It's also providing technical support as well as financial support. We've been, we have a, a program that we started back in the spring to allow parking in one of the C M U, C M U lots on Zabina Way. Uh, sort of after, after five P M on weeknights, and then on the weekends for free, uh, for folks who might be coming down to um, have dinner or enjoy the Carnegie Museums on the weekend or go shopping, and it's been, it's proved to be highly successful, and we're not, we're not using the lot during that time. Um, and so it's we feel like it's a, it's a, was a good uh, give back to the community. Um, and we're looking for more ways, and we're going to continue to meet with, with the community to think about more ways that we can come up with those sorts of ideas. Next slide. more ways that we can come up with those sorts of ideas. Next slide. We have historically had our Craig Street call for our freshman students. It's not quite back yet. We're still sort of in, sort of kind of in COVID times. But we're hoping that, that next year that'll return for orientation where we, our newest students, students who come from every state in the country and all across the world to help them know about the, the wonderful resource that is Craig Street. And wait for them when they feel like they need to sort of get off campus. But there's, there's a great place for them to do that. So it's right, right next door. And talked about the, the parking area on Speedway, also promoting and supporting events like the South Craig Street Sale. And it's been, it's been a very healthy partnership. It's going to, and we keep moving forward. Next slide. All right. Then finally, having a positive economic impact on the region. We've got almost 20,000 jobs across the state. Three and this, and these numbers are from, from, from 2020. So they're, they're a little bit outdated. But billions of dollars in economic impact, whether it's our operations, whether it's construction. Hundreds of corporate partnerships, startups at more and more every year. So we're proud to be a partner with the Commonwealth and the city of Pittsburgh to generating funds that are used for, for important services that the government provides. Next slide. All right. So I think with that, I'm going to turn it back to Bob.
Thanks Jen. And so my job here is to bring it home. We're almost done, I promise. Which is the last pieces and everything which Jen kind of wrapped up the rest of the actual document. We want to talk about now is some of the, the discussion points that we've had since the briefing. And some of our comments that we've gotten from the planning commission, as well as our neighbors over the last two months. The first was comments, what are kind of a theme of the community comments that we've been getting? And a lot of, basically the comments break into three main pieces. One is mobility. One is infrastructure and then one was on neighborhood engagement. You can see on mobility was a lot of wanting to make sure that we, that the good work that we've been doing on Forbes Avenue and Fifth Avenue about creating wider sidewalks, protected sidewalks with raised planting beds. Continue to do that, continuing to work with the city and Domeon about making those bike connections that are missing across and through campus. And continue to work on making, using our parking in its most efficient manner. When it comes to infrastructure, there's two of the main things. One is continuing to do important stormwater management. We are at the kind of bottom edge of two major drainage basins that come down Beeler and Forbes Avenue. And how can every drop of water that we prevent from going into the four mile run sewer system helps prevent backups coming up, up those areas and go overflows into the river. And then working on restoring the tree canopy. Jen talked a lot about that. That's one that we've been working hard with our commitment at 110% replacement. And then the last piece is neighborhood engagement. This is something that we believe in very strongly. We go to a lot of meetings, we're going to continue to go for. Is why do we think that there, it's important to engage and be good partners? Question, why did we wanted to expand the EMI district in those two places? I think that was a, that's a fair question. I think Jen answered that as well, very well, which is we know providing EMI zoning for those properties, you have better protection and better understanding of what is allowed and more importantly, not allowed over the next 10 years. Let's go to the next slide, please. We could talk, there was some, one of the comments that came from the planning commission in the first briefing was talking about the way we identified our development sites. And the first thing we did out of that and kind of restructured the entire document as such was to expand and make it easier to read and understand where these development sites were, where the setbacks are, et cetera. And so we moved each development site rather than being kind of all squashed a couple of, two or three to a page. We made one page for each, each of the 20 development sites. We've expanded it, made it easier to read, et cetera. You can see here from all the kind of components that we did. And if we go to the next page, the next page will actually show how, here's three examples that we showed back in July of how we do, how we did that. Rest assured, Megan has now implemented that throughout the entirety of the document and all 20 development sites are in the document in this manner now. So it's a lot easier to read. Next slide, please. Kind of getting close to the end. One of the comments that came up at the last discussion was of what materials are allowed or not allowed at the university or through this master plan. And we, while there was text that was kind of buried in there that talked about it, we decided to just take it straight on and talk about it right up front. What are our preferred materials? What are our prohibited exterior materials? And then what are the potential detail materials that were materials that we are interested in also seeing? So you can see our preferred materials, brick, stone, terracotta or equivalent tile transparent glass. Prohibited, artificial stucco, concrete block, mirrored glass. And the ideal then that we'd have materials, detail materials such as metal panels or precast concrete that are allowed. These, these three pieces were added to each of the urban design guidelines for each of the three districts. And they, they vary slightly between each district, but they're in there now. Uh, next slide, please. Moving towards the end, one of the comments that we got from the neighbors on, on Forbes Avenue in Gladstone is if we're not proposing any redevelopment of the Woodlawn apartment building, could we just not rezone that at this point? And so we agreed to that. We think it's okay in this case because we, to not zone what we own because we have an existing occupancy permit for the building, we're continuing to operate. It's kind of on the edges. However, we do feel it's important to look at those other areas because those are really more focused on student housing. And so we've actually pulled that out of this proposal and Kevin, Kevin acknowledged that early on. Uh, next slide, please. Last item on here is thanks to the hard work of our transportation team at GAI. And our friends at Domey, we have now had an approved transportation impact study, which was approved last week. And so we are all legit and ready to go on that piece of it. So he's wanted to include that. Last slide, I think this is the last slide coming up. Is just kind of our wash where we are. The documents are all continuing to be available online on our webpage. It's important to note that throughout this, we even had physical copies available at the sites located down on that second row here, both on campus and at the Carnegie library so that people, if they didn't want to look at it online, they could still go out and find our master plan as well as had a direct email link to us if there's been any questions. So with that all said, uh, thanks Jen for great bringing it up through the last section of the document. And I think we're going to wrap up our presentation now.
Well, thank you very much for a very thorough presentation. At this time, we do take public testimony. So if there is someone here that would like to give public testimony. I'm sorry. It looks like someone's hand is raised, but I'm not hearing whomever might be speaking. Is that Joe?
George Petropolis, you have three minutes to speak.
Georgia. Sorry y'all. Good afternoon. Uh, this is Georgia Petropolis. Can you all hear me now? Yes, thank you. Good afternoon commissioners. Um, so I'm here representing the Oakland Business Improvement District. I'm their chief executive officer. And you did receive our letter dated July 22nd, which was in support of the IMP. But I am here also to reaffirm that support, especially given the extensive presentation we just heard. Um, so just wanted to note that we are a registered community organization for the Oakland neighborhoods. And as a, and a Pittsburgh organization with extensive experience in managing business districts anchored by universities and hospitals. And once again, we are in full of support of CMU's IMP that you all, that we all saw today. We have a shared mission in recognizing Oakland as both a global center of innovation and a local serving neighborhood. Where thousands of residents, students, employees and businesses call home. We've always been a partner to the South Creek business community, but most recently in 2021. Thanks to the partnership with Carnegie Mellon, we did, we began an extensive outreach to organize the business owners to help create connections amongst the business owners, property owners and stakeholders. And to develop preliminary, both short-term, mid and long-term goals and strategies of which many of them and all of them you saw today in the IMP that was presented. We had many pilot accomplishments which we could not achieve without CMU support and partnership. CMU provided free parking for customers. They provided space to not only host various meetings which were occurring in person monthly. But also they provided space to host a much needed business district management event of which you saw the flyer for today promoting the South Creek business community. And more importantly, they provided the business owners access to their CMU campus community, which is so essential and so important for business owners to continue to have exposure to this, this in-demand customer population right there next to their campus business district. We are of course planning more benefiting activities for the winter and for 2023, which will include a pilot outdoor dining opportunity of which again you saw today. An example of a, a goal that we want to reach together for the South Creek business community. Personally, I have worked with many university partners and I applaud this team at CMU who really get what is needed. So what's needed for not only a campus as you, as they've become masters of campus management and campus design, but also what's needed for managing a successful commercial district, especially a successful commercial district in the post-COVID world. So I look forward to continue to work with TMCMU with many of their departments. We have a lot of work that continues to need to be done and the business owners are excited and continue to be excited to do that work. We need Oakland to continue to thrive as the economic generator. Craig Street is a Pittsburgh gem and this visionary institutional master plan is essential for the continued viability and success of this important community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any other hands raised? Anyone else would like to give public testimony?
I'm not seeing any right now.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, at this time, questions, comments? Very thorough presentation. So I think everything's been covered. Thank you very much. Commissioner Mango, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk. Um, thank you, Bob and everybody else who I'm missing Jen. And thank you very much for this very thorough presentation. I especially appreciate splitting it up so that we have some time to really look at the plan, so that we had several months and then having a break for it. And I also appreciate how you've incorporated comments that you've received from other people or other stakeholders, other businesses into your presentation so that we can understand how your proposal, your plan is impacted by the feedback. So I don't really have any comments. I look forward to continuing to bike across the campus at very slow speeds. And not hit anybody. And I'm very excited about especially the, the Craig Street development ideas and how, and pedestrian safety. I know that some of that is, has been challenging on, on Fifth Avenue as well. So I, I look forward to see what the next 10 years, 15, 20 years bring us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dick, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, two, two comments. One, I really did not hear, see any mention of renewable, non-fossil energy on the campus. So I'm interested in what your, your position on those things. And secondly, I'd like to encourage is wide diversity of business development on South Creek Street as possible.
I get to answer the first one very easily Holly. Right now with the university, a hundred percent of our electricity that we buy is all from renewables on campus. And so that's all, all of our, a hundred, a hundred percent, a hundred percent of our electricity that we buy is from renewable resources. So that's, that's the first piece. A second piece, as Jen mentioned, you know, one of the big moves was when we were moved as part of the Bellfield Boiler Consortium about 10 years ago from the coal-fired boiler plant to this, to the natural gas, which had a dramatic reduction. So I think, you know, our move, we're continuing to move away from those. Electric was our first piece on that. And we're looking for how we can continue to do that. I think we're all hoping that someday there, there's a better way to make steam or heat for the university. As we're working towards that. But the first piece was the hundred percent electric, a hundred percent electric on campus was the first piece on that. To your second one, that your, your, your position, your position about wanting to have local businesses on Craig Street is absolutely spot on. One of the things that, there's a reason why we have not filled the Quiznos space on Craig Street yet because we have, we, we've been called by all kinds of national, regional restaurant, coffee shop, cell phone companies, et cetera. We think that that's not the right position to go. And since we do own that, uh, we have an opportunity to kind of direct where that goes. And so we're looking, we're, we're very, we're happy to kind of wait until we get the right fit for the business district with that. We wish that maybe some of the other property owners on Craig Street were a little more discerning as well. But we're hoping that we can over time start to move from kind of vacant spaces that basically houses, you know, ATMs or kind of spaces like that could move towards more local supporting businesses on the, on the business district. And we're, 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 we're doing that by doing it ourselves, you know, walking the walk.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Uh, any other commissioners? Questions, comments? Okay, very good. Uh, well then we will move on. Commissioners, the recommended motion is for approval to city council. And also a recommended motion to city council for the institutional master, master plan for the university. Do I have a motion from the floor?
So moved.
All right. Commissioner Dick. Okay, very good. Commissioner Blackwell.
I.
Commissioner Burton Falk.
I.
Commissioner Dick.
I.
Commissioner Mango.
I.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Hi.
Thank you commissioners and thank you to the CMU team. Again, very good presentation, very thorough. Have a good day.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, commissioners, that concludes the hearing and action portion of today. We are going to move on to the plan of lots. Agenda item D. I understand that we are going to batch these into two different groupings. So at the sake of brevity, I'm going to do the first two and then we'll do three through 11. Plan of lots, item number one is DCP dash lot dash 2022 dash zero one zero nine eight. At Masette Road, Major Consolidation Ferrywood. Item two, DCP dash lot dash 2022 dash zero one zero four two at Progress Street, Major Consolidation Troy Hill. And presenting that to us today will be Mr. Thunax.
Thank you commissioners. And I believe I'll read in the first one, but then I believe you need to do the motion on that and then I can read in the second one and then you're taking the motion on that.
My apologies. I didn't realize we were separating those two and then going three through. That was my mistake.
Oh no, or well, sorry, Dana was not here to guide me on this one. So I apologize if we have to do them separately or if we take them both, but.
Not a problem.
Oh yes. Uh, good afternoon commissioners. Uh, so this is for DCP lot 2022 oh one oh nine eight. Um, this is a proposed consolidation of three parcels into two parcels. The proposed parcel A would have frontage on Beach Nut Drive in Mazette Road and would be 400 and four, 400 big lot, 404 404, 400,0962 square feet in area. The proposed parcel B would have frontage on Mazette Road and Broadhead Fording Road and would be 696, 100,320 square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant. Uh, the recommended motion is to preliminary approve and schedule for final review on September 20th, 2022. And then the second lot is DCP LOT 2022 zero one zero four two. Uh, this is proposed consolidation of five parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Progress Street and River Road. It would be 66,552 square feet area. An eight-story building is located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to preliminary approve and schedule final review on September 20th, 2022.
Okay, commissioners. Based on the recommended motion for items one and two, do I have a, a motion? No, no.
Don't you take public testimony first?
My apologies, Commissioner Dick. Absolutely. Is there any public testimony regarding items one and two under plan of lots?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good catch, Commissioner Dick. Hearing, none. Do I have a motion from the Commissioners?
I just had a quick question before the motion, Commissioner. Do you, is there any discussion of what they're consolidating this property for like on Mizet? And Broadhead Fording Road? Or is it just consolidation without a proposed plan yet?
I am not familiar with any proposed plans for these lots, but I can. You know, we could do that research and provide that information.
Thank you.
Okay, are we able to move forward with motion?
And Commissioner, I am seeing two hands raised. I'll allow Mark Ridenbach.
Thank you. Hello there.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Ridenbach. I'm the surveyor record for this subdivision for the Ferrywood. We're working with the RIDC. For the redevelopment of the existing three parcels that front on Mazet Road, Beach Nut Drive and Broadhead Fording Road. So the intention here is to vacate existing city streets. Provide a twenty-foot storm surge easement for the PWSA along Beach Nut Drive. And then have two developable parcels for commercial development for the RIDC.
Thank you very much for that information. I grew up on that side of town and. My mom was actually a committee woman when she was alive to, that's why I asked. It won't affect my vote today, but I was interested. Because I know that it's a very large. Space and it used to hold housing. So I wanted to know what was being brought to be that will replace all of those houses. So thank you for that information.
That was a great question.
Thank you.
And there was a second hand, I do believe.
Yes, I'm gonna allow Kelsey Kanspedos to talk.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Kanspedos. I work for RIDC. I'm the development manager for this project. I just wanted to add on top of what Mark had said. We are developing this site in conjunction with the URA. So it's. A joint venture with the URA and we do have a single user for the first building. That will be located on, if you're looking at the plan, page right of the site. For a hundred and fifty thousand square foot user, that is Ferguson. And that's all I have to add. Thank you.
No, thank you both for your testimony here today. Much appreciated. Okay, so Commissioners, having heard testimony. Do I have a motion from the floor for the recommended motion for items one and two?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Dick, all right, Commissioner Blackwell.
I.
Burton Falk, I Commissioner Dick.
I.
Commissioner Mango. Commissioner O'Neil.
I.
I.
Very good. Thank you. Motion passes on lots, item one and two. Mr. Kuhnack, would I be safe to understand that we'll now be doing three through eleven? Is that accurate?
I believe that's accurate, yes.
Okay, very good. Then I will read in items three through twelve. Item number three, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero two six. Carrington Street Minor Consolidation Central North Side. Item number four, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero two nine. Shaler Street Minor Subdivision Duquesne Heights. Item number five, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two. Dash zero one zero five one Saint Michael Street Minor Consolidation South Side Slopes. Item six, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero. Six two at Seaward Street Minor Subdivision Duquesne Heights. Item number seven, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one zero. Uh, two five at forty-first Street Minor Subdivision Central Lawrenceville. Item number eight, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two. Dash zero one one zero one Camp Street Minor Subdivision Upper Hill. Item nine, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two. Dash zero one one zero zero Goatman Street Minor Subdivision Troy Hill. Item number ten, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one six. Two six Cedar Avenue Minor Lot Line Revision East Allegheny. Item number eleven, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty-two. Dash zero zero three six one Kent Way Minor Subdivision Upper Lawrenceville. Mr. Kuhnack.
Thank you. And can we go back to slide number three, please?
Sure.
And you're very quiet.
Let me see if I can correct that. Thank you.
That is much better.
I can also bring it up if we're having some technical difficulties. Thank you. So this is DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero one zero two six. The proposed consolidation of two parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot would have frontage on Carrington Street and would be fourteen hundred square feet. In area, the subject property is currently vacant. And the recommended motion is to approve Carrington Street consolidation. The next lot is DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero one zero two nine. The proposed subdivision of one parcel into three parcels. Lot one would have frontage on Shaler Street and would be ten thousand one hundred and ninety-three square feet in area. Lot two would have frontage on Seaward Street and would be three thousand. Six hundred and sixty-three square feet in area. And the proposed lot three would have frontage on Seward Street. It would be. Three thousand six hundred and sixty-five square feet in area. A house is located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to approve the Shaler Street subdivision. The next lot is DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero one zero five one. The proposed consolidation of four parcels into two parcels. Proposed lot one would have frontage on Saint Michael Street and would be five thousand three hundred and eighty-three square feet in area. Lot two would have frontage on Saint Michael Street. It would be two thousand. Six hundred and seventeen square feet in area. A house which will be demolished is located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is to approve the Saint Michael Street consolidation. Next is DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero one zero six two. The proposed subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. Lot one would have frontage on Seward Street and be twenty-four hundred square feet in area. Lot two would have frontage on Seward Street and would be twenty-seven hundred and fifteen square feet in area. And the recommended motion is to approve the Seward Street subdivision. Next is DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero one zero two five. A proposed subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. The proposed lot one would have frontage on Forty-first Street and be one thousand eight hundred and seventy-four square feet in area. The proposed lot two would have frontage on Banner Way and would be. One thousand eight hundred and seventy-four square feet in area. Access to Forty-first Street would be provided by a three point five foot wide easement. The subject property is currently vacant and the recommended motion is to approve the Forty-first Street subdivision. Next is DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero one one zero one. The proposed subdivision of one parcel into six parcels. Lot one, so all these lots have frontage on Camp Street. Lot one is one thousand six hundred and twenty-three square feet in area. Lot two is one thousand five hundred and seventy-two square feet in area. Lot three is one thousand five hundred and seventy-two square feet in area. Lots four and five are also one thousand five hundred and seventy-two feet in area and lot six would be. One thousand six hundred and twenty-three feet in area. A multi-unit residential building containing twelve dwelling units is on the subject property. As a result of this subdivision, the building would become two. As a result of this subdivision, the building would become six two-unit residential structures, each on their own lot. The recommended motion is that the Camp Street subdivision be approved. Next is DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero one one zero zero. A proposed consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed lot one would have frontage on Goatman Street. It would be. Thirteen thousand two hundred and nineteen square feet in area. A house is located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is that the Goatman Street consolidation be approved. Next is DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero one six two six. A proposed lot line revision involving two parcels. The revised lot one R would have frontage on East Ohio Street would be two thousand eight hundred and fifty-four square feet in area. The revised two R would have nineteen point five feet of frontage on Cedar Avenue and would be one thousand nine hundred and ninety. Three square feet in area. No new parcels are created in this plan. Two structures are located on the subject property and the recommended motion is to approve the Cedar Avenue Lot Line Revision. And finally, we have DCP lot twenty twenty-two zero zero three six one. The proposed subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. Lot one would have frontage on Home Street. It would be twelve hundred square feet in area. Lot two would have frontage on Kent Way. It would be eleven hundred square feet in area. A house that fronts under Kent Way is located on the subject property. And the recommended motion is that the Kent Way subdivision be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhnack. Very good job running through all of those items. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony. And it looks like there may be two. People who would like to give testimony.
Stephen Pascal, I'm going to unmute you. Please state your name and provide your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Pascal, seven twenty-eight Cedar Avenue. And I'm call, I'm. Testifying about the proposal for the minor lot line revision on Cedar Avenue. Christopher Gates, the, and I and the, the current owner, East Ohio Capital Group have negotiated an agreement regarding. This revision of property lines. Unfortunately, the plan that you have. On the agenda and that you just showed is not the one that is the basis of the agreement. It's, it's, it's off in half a dozen ways. It's, it's an outdated plan. So I don't know whether there's a representative from East Ohio Capital. Or the engineer that drew the plan. Or whether a new, whether the revised plan can be submitted at this point. If not, then I, I would suggest that you table this for the next, for the next hearing. I would, I would certainly be opposed. This is, we'll have, it'll have to, it'll have to be a do-over if we don't, if this one goes through as it is. Is what I'm saying.
Okay, Mr. Lehman, I believe that we can pull this one. Until the revised agreed. Plans are, are then sent in so that we're approving the corrected. Plan.
Yeah, I, I can, I can, you know, back up what, what is being testified to, that there is a. An agreement or a pending agreement regarding this plan. And apologies if we've somehow substituted the wrong plan in, but. Yeah, in, I think in light of the, the comments here and, and that, I would recommend that the commission just. Tables that particular plan and then we'll reconvene with that.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman.
I know that we, we table a plan until such time as the corrected plan can be presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All right, Commissioner O'Neil, Commissioner Blackwell.
I.
Burton Falk, I, Dick.
I.
Commissioner Mango.
I.
Commissioner O'Neil.
I.
And that which we have voted to table and pull out would be. Plan of lots, section D, plan of lots, item number ten, which is DCP dash lot. Dash twenty twenty-two dash zero one six two six. At Cedar Avenue Minor Lot Line Revision East Allegheny. Just for the record. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pascal, for bringing that to our attention. We have another individual, I do believe, correct?
Yes, Stuart Goll, I'm going to unmute you. Please state your name and provide your testimony.
Hi, my name is Stuart Goll. I am attorney and representing the developer for this, for the project on which Mr. Pascal was speaking. Which is East Ohio Development. Mr. Pascal is correct. We have. Called this previously to the attention of the. City that the wrong plan was included. And if anyone has access to email or if Mr. Pascal is still on the line, we are in a position to once again email the correct plan to the city. I realize it's been tabled for two weeks, but this project has been going on for an awfully long time. We'd like to keep it moving. If anyone has access to it, I think Mr. Pascal probably picked up on the fact that it said. TMP, I believe in the lower right-hand corner of the drawing that was presented. There's another drawing kicking around that should have VB one oh one in the lower right-hand corner. And we've confirmed with Mr. Pascal and Mr. Gates's counsel this morning, and that is the plan that. We had hoped that the commission was going to consider this afternoon. If there's any way to address that now. And.
Yeah, I, I apologize. It's, it is our. The individual that normally works with subdivisions is not in this week. And, and so if there had been. Something, something that we missed.
Right, this was conveyed last week. This was conveyed last week. And if there's anyone around him, I could email the plan now and it could be integrated into the presentation. That would be great.
I mean, I, we can, I'm afraid that, I understand the, the urgency, Mr. Goll, and, and apologize that. You know, that, you know, but frankly, with, with only a week turnaround, it is possible that we would not have that kind of thing. So. We can, you know, if, Kevin, if you have access to, to that email inbox. For the subdivisions or if somebody wants to, I, I just, I'm not sure if the commissions. Feels comfortable acting on a plan. Is just received by email right now.
And normally there's a, and sorry for interjecting, normally staff has time to review and, you know, receiving. Someone on the phone is really.
And with respect, with respect. And with respect, with respect, uh, to Commissioner O'Neill's, uh, comments, my understanding is that our application was actually submitted with the correct drawing and that this incorrect drawing was somehow substituted in the process of preparing for the meeting. Which is why Mr. Pascal picked up on it when he, uh, went through the presentation materials and called it to our attention.
Again, that, again, that's possible. There could have been a mix-up on our side. I don't want to say that. I don't want to presume anything. I, I'm, I do apologize on behalf of the planning department if there was some mistake on our side.
Okay.
Can I ask, i- is the map wrong and the report is accurate or are they both inaccurate?
Um, I believe, my understanding is the map is wrong. Um, and Mr. Pascal, if he's still on the line, can probably fill it in, still available, can probably fill in some of the details. I unfortunately am not in front of my computer right now and not in a position to compare the two.
I don't know if I can be heard. Have I been muted?
No, we can hear you, Stephen.
Okay, uh, both the, uh, the, the, uh, the lot plan, the graphic, uh, with the, uh, and the, whatever is the second half, the documentary side that designates the, the, the signators has been changed.
Okay.
Commissioners? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to know whether you needed to know anything more.
Uh, Commissioners, at this time, uh, we have taken a motion to table. I think that that would probably, uh, be our best path forward, uh, just because we're, we're trying to look through and very quickly, I do apologize, uh, to Mr. Goll and, um, others who are impacted by this. But we would need to delay just to, to ensure that a careful review has been done so that there, that it is accurate at this point. Uh, so we'll continue to move forward with commission's vote, uh, to table, uh, again extending apologies. Thank you. Uh, at this, pardon?
I just said, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. We appreciate your time and coming in to give testimony. Um, at this time, uh, are there any other hands raised?
There are no other hands raised, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. Uh, given that there are no other hands raised and we have taken, um, items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and eleven. We are batching. We have pulled item number ten. Do I have a motion from the floor on items, uh, three through nine and eleven?
Some of, some of, that we approved them.
Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner O'Neill, uh, thank you very much. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton Falk? Aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Commissioner Mingo?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, the Plan of Lots, uh, are all approved with the exception of item ten. Uh, we are moving on in our agenda to Agenda Item F. And that would be the Director's Report. Do we have a Director's Report here today?
I do not believe that we have a Director's Report other than to say, I hope everyone had a wonderful break and a happy Labor Day. And, uh, we will look forward to continuing our, uh, fall with you. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Sir Lehman. I, I would like to thank the commission, uh, for being here today. Staff, thank you. Uh, as always, for ensuring that we've got, uh, everything that we need to move forward on a meeting. I want to apologize for being a little rusty today.